April 14th, 2020. And so I will have our city recorder, recorder Claudia do a roll call. Claudia?
Counselor Draskin.
Present.
Counselor Garvin. Counselor Garvin.
Adam, you're muted.
Counselor Garvin is here. He's just unmuted, I believe.
Right.
Counselor Geary?
Uh, oh, I'm here. Sorry.
No worries. Counselor Stassen? We do not see Wendy. Counselor Stassen's at this moment. Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Council President Minky?
She's.
Council President Minky waved and Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you, Claudia. Well, in our work session this evening, well, let me, let me stop just for a moment and welcome a number of other individuals that are joining us. Spencer, it's good to see you. You're acting as our legal counsel tonight. We've got staff and, and others on the line. Our item for discussion this evening is a discussion on the 2003 Urban Growth Boundary Submittal Review for Direction as to where we want to go. We instructed staff at our last meeting to, to prepare a dialogue for us, and that's what's going to be happening tonight. So with that, I will call on our planning director, Heather Richards, to lead us in a discussion. So Heather?
Before we have Heather present, I just want to state for the record that yesterday afternoon Heather sent me some additional documents, which I emailed out to City Council this morning, and then as well as an email from Alexis Brittle that was emailed directly to council. All those documents will go into the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. And I just, I just got word that Wendy's trying to get on, so I'll tell her to try to get on through the link that's found in the calendar posting. So we'll see if we can get Wendy here. Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, great. So good evening, Mayor and councilors. And for those who are online with us, this is our first work session via Zoom, and we chose such an easy subject to do in terms of UGB expansions in McMinnville. But we are excited to have this dialogue with you tonight and continue to move these discussions forward. For those who did not get my email that went to City Council, I wanted to let you know what we sent out this morning that we prepared last night was simply the Department of Land Conservation and Development Staff Report and Decision on the 2006 Submittal that the city provided to them. So tonight, we're going to walk you through a PowerPoint presentation, much like our other work sessions that we do with you in the council chambers. It is meant to be sort of a back and forth if you have questions. We want to get through the information, but we also want you to be able to ask questions as we go. The intent tonight is to follow up on the work session you had on January 22nd, where you gave us some direction on exploring whether or not the city could respond to the 2012 remand for our 2003 UGB expansion submittal and what that would look like in terms of response. The presentation will be provided by myself, DJ Heffernan, and Tom Shower, so we're going to share our screens at different times with you to walk you through it. And now I'm going to try and figure out how to share my screen. Sorry. I'm usually the host, so.
That looks good, Heather. It's come up.
Okay, I'm going to try to get you on the beginning, though. So is it now in a screen share with you?
It is.
Yeah.
Growing McMinnville Mindfully. Heather, was this in the materials that were emailed? I didn't see the slide showing that stuff.
I got some slides I know just not too long ago.
Okay, I'll double check. Seems like Heather might have lost connection.
It's in the 4:43 PM email from our smart CC UGB work session.
Yeah.
Got it.
Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, now, yeah.
For some reason, Zoom quit on me unexpectedly. Can you still see my shared screen?
No.
What about now?
Now it's coming back up.
Yeah, okay. So growing McMinnville Mindfully, let's see if we can get through this. So it is a follow-up to the January 22nd work session. McMinnville's trying to decide how it will move forward with growth planning to accommodate the next 20 years of population growth within the city's urban growth boundary. And our discussion today is really to focus on what that, what a response to that Court of Appeals 2002 remand for the 2003 submittal is, what it will look like in terms of time, costs, and risks in comparison with starting a new UGB expansion effort. So when we came to you on January 22nd, we were really asking the question of, is there a path forward in terms of our growth planning processes? And at that time, we had hit a barrier in terms of where, where we thought we would be going with our growth planning in terms of doing an urban reserve area and then pulling a UGB out of that. I think that everyone recognizes that McMinnville does need to expand its UGB. I don't think that that has been something that has been challenged necessarily. The need to expand has not been the issue. It's really how do we do that? And we've been talking about that for the past 20 years, and, and it has been challenged and opposed in terms of the how. So our UGB history, the last time we adopted a urban growth boundary was in 19, well, the first time and only time was in 1981. We adopted our UGB for a 1980 to 2000 planning period. And we need to ensure that we always have 20 years of billable land within our urban growth boundary. We then started into periodic review with Department of Land Conservation and Development in 1988. And since then, we've gone through the series of efforts to look at growth needs and expansion of the UGB to accommodate those growth, growth needs since then, ending up in a remand from the Court of Appeals to LCDC in 2012, which came to the city in 2013. And at that time, we decided to let it rest. We, we had, we were a little battle worn. We were resource depleted in terms of funds put into this effort and just decided we needed a little bit of break from this, this effort. Then in 2018, we started to work again on it with a housing needs analysis, economic opportunities, opportunity analysis, and the direction from you and the county to pursue an urban reserve area in UGB. We know that land supply is constrained. We know it's led to higher land costs. We know it's led to decreasing affordable housing opportunities. Overall housing affordable, overall housing opportunities have decreased as well in all income levels. We have increasing homeless population. We've had a loss of economic opportunities. We've had more on population growth occurring in the unincorporated county, which equates to sprawl in the planning world. We've had a deficit in tax revenue to fund public's levels of services over the last 10 years, and we're looking at infill in a vacuum rather than master planning. We believe that McMinnville's beginning to gentrify. We believe that lower and moderate income households are being displaced, that homelessness is increasing, that the, the average home sales price in 2019 was $398,200, when we have a median household income of $55,400. Employers are losing employees doing, due to housing scarcity. Our last successful UGB amendment was adopted in 1981 for planning horizon to 2000. And then McMinnville spent about $1 million on our 2003 effort that we submitted to the state that also had hundreds of hours of staff time and hundreds of hours of community engagement. This is a graph that shows how price, home prices in McMinnville is escalating, even more so in the last couple of years, and also what incomes can afford in our community. So at this point in time, not even those incomes at $60,400, which would be 120% of the median family income for McMinnville can afford our median housing price that's on the market today. So establishing needs, not the issue. It's how do we accommodate that need? And that's been the dialogue and the dialogue tonight. We talk a lot in McMinnville recently about how should McMinnville grow? Should we grow up, out, or a little bit of both? Up would be staying within our UGB and going to much higher density residential development than we have today. Out, only out would be maintain the same type of development profile that we have today and expanding all of our growth into our urban growth boundary expansion. And a little bit of both, which is what the Oregon Land Use System is really looking for, is looking at doing higher density development within your existing UGB and then expanding to accommodate new housing supply as needed. In Oregon, we do follow regulatory framework, and this is important for tonight's discussion, where we identify what lands we expand into. We call it prioritization of lands for expansion, and you might hear us refer to as ORS 197.298. And it describes all the different, where we can look for new lands for that UGB expansion and the order in which we do it. So the first priority is you go into your urban reserve area if you have one. We do not have one. The second priority is that you would look at what we call exception land next, adjacent to the urban growth, the existing urban growth boundary. An exception land is those non-resourced lands. Typically, they are lands that have been developed at a county level for development, so rural residential lands or employment lands in the county. The third priority is land designated as marginal land. So that's land that isn't valued, farm and forest lands. And the fourth priority is agricultural and forest land. So that's really the last place to look for expansion lands. And in that, there is also a priority structure. You look at low-value farmland first and then high-value farmland second. The reason that's important in McMinnville is that we have two types of lands surrounding us. We have exception lands, which is all the lands that have a color that is not tan on this map. And then the, the lands that are tanned are high-value farmland. So we have the second priority and the last priority lands. What's tough, though, is the exception lands surrounding us are fairly intensely developed. So there isn't a lot of opportunity for redevelopment of those properties, and that's been the, the dialogue in McMinnville for the last 25 years, is how do you put your need on property that's already developed at a certain intensity and density? We have to, by law, look at land within a mile for, well, this, this map shows what the lands look like within a mile of the city of McMinnville that are exception lands. This was provided to us by DLCD recently. So it shows we have a lot of exception lands around us. And then this map shows far soils, high-value farmland soils. So those soils that are in the red, orange, and yellow are the high-value farmland soils. And then a lesser priority would be the light green and blues.
And Heather, would it be fair to say on the left side of our map over in the West Hills that that would be a compatibility, compatibility class four, but that is heavy on a slope?
Yeah, so, and we're going to go through that. So great question, Mayor. We're going to walk, that's the other, so the tough piece of McMinnville is we, we have two types of lands, exception lands or high-value farmland. Within the high-value farmland, we have two different structures. And we're looking at, this is sort of the lower priority of high-value farmland, but it's also an area where we have development constraints in terms of slopes and some other things that are happening there. Lands, we have high, high landslide soils that have been identified in that area, and it's in a water zone that doesn't have infrastructure at this point in time. So those are all things that we have to look at and study and talk about and create findings for when we're talking about where we're going to expand into. And DJ's going to walk you through some of that discussion. So in terms of potential paths forward, we came to you on the 22nd and identified several different ways to move forward with the, the growth planning. So by the state law, we should be, goal 14 is that we do identify how we're going to resolve our need for accommodating growth for 20 years for both housing and employment lands. And so we gave you seven different scenarios that we could think of, and we tried to put everything on the table for that, from do nothing to negotiate a deal to traditional approaches. And out of that meeting, and then we also did an analysis as to what we saw was risk, costs, and time associated with those different scenarios. And when we looked at it for a success level, we were looking at for success relative to what actually solves the city's needs. And sometimes what actually solves the city's needs may not be the same thing as, as meeting all the covenants of state law. So we commute all the covenants of state law and still not meet the city's needs. So the, the goal is to meet the covenants of state law and meet the city's needs at the same time. And then what achieves all the land use goals and costs associated with it and time associated with it. And from that work session, you gave us direction to evaluate responding to the 2012 remand of the 2003 McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan. And I can share with you, going into the work session, I had no preconceived notions of where we would end up as a direction, as a city, or what direction you would provide to us. But I, and at one point in time, we weren't even going to put, respond to the remand on the list because we, we didn't think of that as an option until very late in the game. So it was interesting that that came out as the direction from City Council, but we've been looking at it since, and that's what we're bringing to you tonight. So to understand what responding to the remand would be, I wanted to give you a little bit of history of what's occurred with this particular submittal. So we call it the MGMUP. That's in the McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan. It has a planning horizon of 2003 to 2023. So I shared that our existing one on the books is a 1980 to 2000 planning horizon. We started working on this in 1994, when we did things like a coordinated population forecast and we drafted our first housing needs analysis. We went through a few bumps and hurdles along the way over those six years putting that work together. There were different challenges and reworking of the information and data. And then in 2001, we adopted the housing needs analysis. This was appealed to LUBA, and then it was remanded back to the city. So in 2002, the city started work on a urban growth boundary alternatives analysis. So we showed need and we wanted to do a study as to where we would expand. And, and then we submitted that with the remanded HNA to the state. Well, the city adopted it in 2003 by ordinance number 4795. I think it's 4796. That might be a typo. We also had the EOA in that ordinance. Oh, 4795 adopted the EOA, and ordinance number 4976 adopted the MGMUP. And we submitted that to the state. The state held a hearing on it. There were objections filed at that point in time, and then the state then remanded it back to the city again for more work. And then in 2006, the city adopted ordinance number 4840 and 4841, which amended that McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan and sent it back up to the state again. So in that five-year period, we went through a series of ups and downs through the, through the decision-making process and the decision-making bodies. So in 2006, DLCD staff reviewed it, and they approved it, and that's what we sent out to you this morning. That then got the director's approval, got appealed to the Land Conservation and Development Commission, which is a state decision-making body. They then affirmed the DLCD staff's decision. They held a public hearing. There's objections there. The LCDC then voted to affirm DLCD staff's decision, and then that decision was appealed to the Court of Appeals. So the appeal was the LCDC decision to the Court of Appeals. In 2011, the Court of Appeals issued their decision. They found one assignment of error. So the appeal had many different challenges to the decision-making that took place for this, and the court came back and said that there was one assignment of error. They remanded it back to LCDC. So when it's remanded back, it says you followed the wrong process. We want you to look at this a different way. You get it back to us. 2012, LCDC then reviewed it and remanded it back to the city of McMinnville. Interestingly, Yamhill County was not part of that remand, so they're not part of this response process. 2013, the city adopted ordinance number 4961, which was an unwinding of all of its work associated with this 2003 submittal. And in their ordinance, they wrote that they elected to, you wrote that you elected to delay a response to the remand at that time. Then, interestingly, DLCD went into rulemaking in 2014 and 2015 because the response to the city of McMinnville from the Court of Appeals was so complicated that the DLCD felt that they needed to revise the rules to help cities navigate this process of choosing the priority of different lands to expand into. And in 2016, those new rules became effective. And all UGB work that was done prior to these new rules becoming effective could still move forward under the previous rules. And why that's important for you is if we do decide to respond to the remand, we will be responding under the previous rules, and we'll walk you through what that means in terms of the different nuances associated with it.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just got a note. It looks like somebody broke into the winery, so I have to run down there. I'm sorry to leave, and hopefully that's not true. And I'm sorry to interrupt and wanted you to know that only for a very valid reason.
Good luck, Remy, and I hope, I hope it's not true as well.
And we note that, so go, thank you, Remy.
So this is a map that sort of illustrates what went on with that 2003 submittal, which is also important for you in terms of working through tonight's discussion and decision-making. So in two, the 2003 submittal established a need for about 1,200 acres of expansion. And when we submitted in 2003 to this date, several things were challenged in that submittal, but some things were not. So what, what was not challenged was the exception lands that were part of the submittal. The exception lands were what you see as areas one, two, and four in this map. And so those came into the city's UGB. Those were affirmed. They, the state said this works, and that was moved forward. The pink areas on this map did not move forward. So those were areas that were all challenged as part of that original submittal and came back to the city for a remand. We then reworked it and submitted it forward again. And because that went to the Court of Appeals, none of that area that's in pink ever came into the UGB. Section number three is the new high school site, and that was 42 acres for a future school, and that came in through this process as well. So what, the other thing that's important to know is the, the areas one, two, and four, although they've been in our UGB for 16 years now, not one acre of that land has actually annexed into the city or yielded new housing units on it. And part of that discussion is, is the challenge with all this, which is that that land is already what we call parcelized, so they're smaller lots, and there are people living on them, and they're happy with that lifestyle. So it hasn't gone into redevelopment and come into the city for urban development at a dense, at a more dense development rate. The other thing that you should know about the, the land that we're all looking at is there's a couple of things. So to marry your question, out in the West Hills where we saw the green and the blue soils, the, on this map, you'll see the blue section is what we call Water Zone Two. So that's water that currently does not have infrastructure to support development there. We're working with Mac Water and Light on what that infrastructure looks like, how much it costs and how it will be funded. Those costs, though, for that will all be directly on the housing that's created in that area individually, because, so that is, that is assigning a much higher cost to the homes that will be built there. They'll probably get two different types of costs associated with them, both upfront capital costs and then higher utility rates to pay off the infrastructure to support bringing water to that land, because none of that infrastructure exists. There's also, in the gray area you see over there in the West Hills, that is identified on the Dogami map, so Department of Geology and Minerals, as high susceptibility for landslides, so soils that have a high susceptibility for landslide, and we need to study what that looks like in terms of development and costs associated with that. And then after we had submitted the 2003 submittal to the state, a conservation easement was put on about 81 acres of land that was already inside the UGB, and then another substantial amount of land that's outside the UGB but was part of our submittal. That conservation easement has written into it that there will be no development occurring on that property in perpetuity. So that property is no longer buildable. So one of the questions you had for us was, can McMinnville actually respond to this remand that happened in 2012 from LCDC? We did the legal research, and based on that, we feel that we can. We then visited with DLCD, Department of Land Conservation and Development Staff, including their legal counsel, and they support that interpretation that we can move forward with a response to that remand. One of the reasons we can do that is those new rules that were, became effective in 2016 has specific language in there, enabling cities who are working on UGBs prior to those new rules to be able to continue to move forward with their UGB process, with the previous rules. So talking with DLCD, they have said to us that with, as we move forward with the remand, if we decide to do that, we will be working under the statutes and administrative rules that were in effect at the time of the submittal, which was within 2006. So our final submittal was the amended submittal that occurred in 2006, and that's, that's what was appealed to the Court of Appeals, and we will be working under that regulatory So now I'm going to switch it over to DJ, so he can walk through what the remand would look like, how that, what that work would look like.
Heather, can I ask a quick question? Or Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Sure. Go ahead.
This original UGB expansion was for the timeframe of 2003 to 2023. If we decide to go back and finish the process now, will, this will satisfy the next 20-year horizon, or how does that get adjusted?
No, so it will still be for that horizon of 2023. So legally, under the land use law, it will still be for the planning horizon of 2020, 2003 to 2023, and we'll still be using the data that was put together for the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunity analysis associated with that 2006 submittal. So those were done in 2001 and 2003. The table that I sent to you this evening shows a comparison of what that data looks like versus data that we've been working on today, and they're essentially very, very similar in terms of need for the community. But legally, we would still be working on the planning horizon of 2003 to 2023. And we'll walk you through what that means in terms of next steps. If we do do the response to the remand that's successful, then what are the next steps for the city based on that planning horizon? The other question that people have had is, and Spencer, correct me if I'm wrong, but can we use data from that time period? And we've had those dialogues with DLCD. And we've had those dialogues with DLCD, and we can. So that, that's the only acknowledged dataset that we've adopted and has gone through the process and has been affirmed through the process as well, the housing needs analysis from 2001 and the EOA from 2003. Great, thank you.
We break for question. I have a question, too. Do you mind if I throw that one in right now, Mayor?
Go ahead, Zach.
Since the time cleavage between the previous application and now, how does it pass through our, those goal lenses that you just alluded to? That, that, does this, what does this land achieve? How does that pass between when it was and what has happened since then? Is it kind of a same exercise? Or what is the value now? Is that, does that hold?
Did I make sure I understand your question?
On a previous slide or so, you asked, kind of, what is the value of, of what we're asking for? And what are we getting out of all of this? You know, does it meet these goals that we have? Does it still, whatever that, the answers to that exercise were back when it was originally submitted, how does that hold up today? Are those goals, are we still achieving those goals? Does that match up with our intent now and kind of the exercises we've gone through for, you know, our, our future casting, or what's important to us now?
Yeah, so I think I understand your question. Let me see if I can bring up this other document we sent to you today without losing my computer entirely.
And if it's a, if it's a longer question or a longer answer, we can save it for either the discussion period or a different time.
Okay, I just lost my, my shared window, so I can't bring it up. Somebody did not want me to share that document with you.
But it is at the, it's, it's, it came along in the same email, did it not? It was a part of the body of the email.
Yeah. So basically, what I sent to you was a table that identifies the, the two different efforts in terms of the data outcomes, which I think, Zach, is what you're getting at. So what, what is our true need? And how do we respond to the need in terms of future population growth? So the planning horizon for 2023 was planning for a population growth of about 45,000 people. The planning horizon that we've been working on until 2041 is planning for a population growth of up to 48,000 people to move. So the differential there is only 8,000 people. The number of housing units, we provide that in the table as well. They're very close to. The types of housing, we analyze them a little bit differently between the two efforts. But the types of housing for both the 2023 planning horizon and the 2041 planning horizon are fairly similar as well.
Heather, could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So is it kind of like, if we accept this and we can correct the remand or do whatever's necessary, we suddenly end up with everything that's in the pink zone, so to speak?
So, and DJ will walk you through that. We need to, we don't know what we'll end up with because we need to do the analysis. And we need to do it based on that prior prioritization structure that's in the law. And that's, that is the assignment of error that came out of that court decision, is that we didn't follow that prioritization structure as, in, in the manner that the court felt we should have followed it. And they, they put a path as to how to follow it in that court decision. And so that's what we'll be, what we would be doing with our response.
So we have the benefit of some easier information that came out of LCDC or DLCD?
Well, I think DJ's presentation might help answer this, but if I understand what you're saying is, we know the path we have to take to respond to the court's decision and remand.
Okay, we don't necessarily have to go with what they told us exactly, though. We can go with the, the new path according to DLCD.
Well, we could do it, we could, as a city, choose to do a new submittal entirely. And we're going to walk you through it.
No, assuming no new submittal, we have to go back to what the court said then. Okay, that's what I need to know. Thanks.
So Heather, a technical question here. Do you want to reshare your screen with the slides where we left off? Or do you want me to do it from here? I think it might be best if you share that, because you've got slides that you're going to present thereafter. And so if, if it works for you to do it, I'll just say slide, and then you'll advance it. Does that work for you?
Yes, if it will let me share. It kicked me out of it.
It's being naughty.
It is.
There you go.
Okay. That work?
Yep.
Do you guys see all of the video as well that I see on my screen?
Yeah, your next slide comes up. So if you could just, there you go. That's perfect.
Yeah, remand overview.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I'm going to be talking about a couple of different things here. One is to review what's in the Court of Appeals' decision. What guidance does it provide us for how we might go through this problem-solving exercise using the guidance that the court gave us? I'm going to just briefly mention another, another alternative that DLCD has outlined. One of the benefits of following the remand process is there's only one assignment of error. That's not to say that it's not a small assignment of error. It's a big, it's a big change. It basically goes back to square one on buildable lands and how do you screen for what areas come into the UGB. But the other things that, that, there are a bunch of other things, like the buildable lands, I mean, the, the housing needs analysis, the employment analysis, a lot of, some of the implementation measures, all of those, the objections to those things, the court says, no, it's just this one assignment of error related to the urban growth boundary and what's buildable. And so I'm going to be talking about that. So the buildable land, one of the, one of the problems that the court found was that we said that some of the land up in the West Hills was very expensive to serve because it was in water service level 2. And the court said, cost does not make land unbuildable. So the solution there is to revise the buildable land maps to only exclude things that we're allowed to, which include hazard areas, steep slopes, things that are in Goal 5 resource areas that are protected in perpetuity, and then topographic and physical barriers. Slide. And then from those buildable land maps, after we've remapped buildable lands, then we can decide what to include in the UGB based on the statutory priorities and Goal 14 criteria that's laid out in, in rule and law. And we can only skip priority areas, as Heather mentioned earlier, if they cannot meet a specified land need. And that's the critical, so that's the critical thing that we need to go back through, is to look at these areas and decide if they're able to meet a defined land need based on the analysis that was done in 2003, 2006. And, and just briefly, what did DLCD say when they remanded this back to us? They said, well, you can follow the court's instruction, or you can proceed using any other manner that complies with statewide planning goals. Problem with that is, as Heather pointed out in, in her overview of this, those are, that's all new law. It's all new rules that have been promulgated through administrative rulemaking process, and they haven't been challenged again. So one of the problems with this, if you go that route, is that McMinnville is going to be the canary in the coal mine again, leading, leading, leading the way, because nobody else has been through this. So that's one of the advantages of going back to the remand, is that at least you know what the one assignment of error is, and the court has given us guidance on how to address that. Next slide. So was there a question? No, okay. So these are, this is an outline of work that we would undertake if we pursued to address the UGB issues under the remand process. And so I'm going to go through these one at a time. First is to remap buildable land. Well, one of, one of the things that I can pretty clearly say is that most of the land in the expansion areas that we analyzed before is going to be classified as buildable. It, it won't be, it won't include any flood plains that's not buildable, or steep slopes, or high-risk landslide areas. And we can also probably use physical barriers like Baker Creek or the Yamhill River in the Northeast to, to define all exception lands and resource lands that are on the other side of those physical boundaries, topographic boundaries, as unbuildable. And you already have a very strong policy framework saying, we're not going past those. There's one exception, and I'll talk about why we would cross the Yamhill for, for part of this analysis. Next slide. So I apologize for how ugly this is. The scale is pretty hard. But all of the red polygons that you see on that map, those are exception areas. So there's Bun's Village that Heather was just going over. That's northeast of the Yamhill. It's not buildable because it's on the other side of a topographic barrier. Same thing with West Side Road up to the north. But the other exception areas are all pretty much in areas that could be served. It's rational that, that they could be included. Even the areas that are down near the airport, between the airport and the river, is a big area of land that's already committed to urban uses. And so all of that area down there is likely to be, would be considered buildable. Next slide. And this is another figure from 2003. This is resource land areas that were analyzed back then. All of these areas are going to be, would be considered buildable, with the possible exception of Norton Lane, which is east of the, oh, no, no, that would be, that would be.
The conservation area up here.
But that, yes. Now, now, the fact that you can't build on it is a new addition to the, the constraints to that area, is the conservation easement. So we would probably modify the submission to say, that's not buildable because of the conservation easement, not due to service constraints or anything like that. Next slide. So this is what we eventually would get to, is, is a new urban growth boundary expansion proposal. This is Figure 6 from 2003. We'd end up producing something like this. We'd start with all of that new buildable land, next slide, and start analyzing it, oh, this wasn't, we can skip this one, and start analyzing it based on a number of criteria. One of the things that we didn't do and were criticized for was to evaluate the cost to serve those buildable lands in a consistent manner. And so we're intending to use Jacobs Engineering, AKA CH2MIL, to assess the cost to extend water and sewer service to all of those buildable lands in all of those study areas that are considered buildable. And rate them on high, medium, low, with some kind of a dollar sideboards parameters for a range of the cost to serve those areas. This would then become a criteria for evaluating which areas come into the UGB. Next slide. We are also intending to do a development cost analysis. Five acre, five acre sites in two different parts of the cities will have very different development costs associated with them. And the cost to develop land in those areas may or may not be compatible with building a needed housing type or a needed employment use. And so we're mostly talking about housing. The feasibility and the cost to build housing in these typical five-acre sites, and we're intending to kind of look at three of them. These are not real parcels. It's going to be an imaginary analysis, I mean, an imaginary parcel. But the cost in geographic areas where site, the site will have characteristics that are typical of land in those areas will be real. And so we'll get some sense of what the comparable site development costs are to address housing needs in different, in different study areas. Next slide.
Yeah, and DJ, if I can just add to that, what that does, Mayor, to your question of the West Hills, the, the constraints there create a totally different development environment. And so there might be some housing products that make sense there, and then some housing products that don't make sense there. Affordable housing versus higher-end housing, apartment complexes, that type of thing, based on the landslide soils and the topography.
Thank you, Heather.
We're also going to refine the housing land need analysis from, using data from 2001 and 2006. There was a, an amendment, an update to that, some additional analysis. We're going to use the same data, but there were some, there were some, there was some information from the 2001 housing need analysis that determined the amount of land needed to address the need for specific housing types, from executive housing to more affordable housing products. And so we would do that house, that work in-house and try and refine a little further the land need analysis for different types of housing, rather than just by zone, to also analyze it by some affordability criteria. Next slide. And then our job is to build a new UGB expansion area map. We'd also take a look at and consider things like, are there some efficiency measures inside the existing urban growth boundary that could take, be taken to increase development inside the existing UGB? And so, so we, we use those screens that I just lined out, as well as the criteria that are in Goal 14 and in ORS 197 to 98, to come up with a new recommendation. That new recommendation would also probably borrow heavily from the plan designations and zoning and some of the regulatory framework that was outlined in the 2006 plan. So we're not going to go back to the drawing board on that. Unfortunately, if we had had the 2006 plan in place, the amount of land that was used and the density of land that was used would have been much, much higher than it has been because we didn't have the R5 zone, we didn't have the Neighborhood Activity Center, we didn't have R4 zoning used widely. And so we've actually lost some opportunity to, I don't know, grow smarter, I suppose you might say. But this would be done as an in-house exercise and produce the new 2000, the new urban growth boundary recommendation map. And then, next slide. In addition to that, we also have to revise the plan document and findings. Again, wherever possible, we'll use the 2006 amendments as, as a point of departure. Appendix C was the dot, was the chapter in the old plan that went through the whole UGB land selection process. We'd obviously be updating that. And it will be different. It's not going to be the same. And, and as Heather said, we have to let the data and the analysis lead us to the conclusions. Next slide. So this is kind of a, an early estimate of what it might cost to do that for these different tax tasks. We were already in, in, in process redefining buildable lands. We're, I've been in touch with Jacobs Engineering about serviceability analysis for both water and sewer. Where I had, I've had some discussions with developers who would be willing to give us some pro forma guidance on what it might cost to develop on different development sites in the urban growth boundary. And have already started work on building new tables that will be helpful, frankly, going forward, regardless whether we're using the 2001 Housing Needs Analysis or the updated one. This approach for defining housing land needs around affordability criteria as well as zones is something that we've started. And so that, we also then, at the end of all of that, will need to update facility plans, parks, transportation, water and sewer and storm. Transportation and, and water and sewer, some of that work, we might be able to borrow from the existing master plans if the same area, some of the same areas come into the UGB. There's no need to reinvent the wheel there. And those, but those plans may be getting towards the end of their shelf life. And so that, that will need to be scoped when we, when we get approval for what the boundary looks like. Next.
Yeah, and if I can just add, you're going to note, council will have the same type of cost analysis for a new submittal. And we'll have a cost associated with updating public facility plans for the new submittal. It will be slight, it will be higher than this because of the fact that we won't be building upon work that was done in the past for this submittal.
So any, the pros and cons associated with the reman process. It builds on previous work and investment. All of the challenges have been legally resolved with the exception of the one assignment of error. It's a big one, it's where's the urban growth boundary. But still, it's, we've got a pretty clear path forward for how to respond. Now, if any of you have read the court, the Court of Appeals decision, you might disagree with me that that clearly lays out a path forward. It is not, it is not a very clear-cut analysis of how to do it. But it really does boil down to two steps. Step one, define buildable lands. Step two, use the criteria that are provided in statute and rule and to, to screen those areas and decide which ones come in first, with the highest priority going to exception areas and the lowest priority going to high-value farmland. Regardless, the areas that come in have to meet the identified needs that we have. And lands that can't do that don't belong, don't need to come in.
DJ, but at the same token, many others have done that and been successful, right?
Yes, they did it after you did it. And so they've, that's one of the other advantages going back here. Ben and some others used that former path, am I mistaken on that, Heather? Used the, that old process and, and have been successful doing it. You do have a clearer understanding for what the, what the review criteria are.
Yeah, so Angela might be able to correct me. I think she's on the line. But my understanding is there isn't a city that has gone through the new rules from 2016 yet with a substantial UGB amendment. The only one that we're aware of is Donald. And they had a different priority process because every piece of land around them was high-value farmland.
Yeah, that's correct, Heather. We, we don't have any large cities that have done UGB expansions under the new rules, at least not the new priority rules. Everybody like Ben, I think Springfield, Eugene have worked under the old, the old rules.
One, Scott, to your question, others have done it, but others have not done it with data that is as old as ours. That said, one of the, I don't know, I knew this is the wrong way to characterize it, to say it's fortunate, but we went through a horrible recession where everything came to a standstill for a very long time. And Heather's going to show the implications of that. It's really quite remarkable how little has changed in terms of the forecast for housing needs and employment needs and things like that. So I'm going to flip to you.
And then also, just to clarify your previous comment, both Woodburn and Springfield finalized and affirmed their UGB amendments with data that was almost 17 years old when they got to the end. So there, there have been examples of other communities working with this type of, in this type of effort and taking this length of period to get through the process, unfortunately. Okay. Do you want to go through the cons, DJ, as well?
Well, the, they're listed there on the bullet points. It's a big assignment of error, as I said, and we can't use the new rules that were adopted in 2016. Particularly for the infrastructure analysis, there's a little more leeway given in the new rules for infrastructure analysis, although there's still some ambiguity as to how to interpret the language in the rule. But it's, it would be nice if we could use the 2016 rules with the, just the one assignment of error. But if we use the 2016 rule, any part of it, we're back to square one.
Yeah, and we, Tom's going to walk through what the new work looks like under the new rules. But the impractical is in there for a reason. It's in the rule. There hasn't been a city that's gone through this process yet. So there's no case law that defines what impractical is. And McMinnville would be the first city going through that. And so we think that there's a lot of vulnerability there because there will be an effort to define what that is.
And so actually, in some respects, it's, we avoid doing that by going through the reman because we can, we're going to say that most of it's buildable and you can serve it. We'll have to use other criteria to decide areas that are very difficult to serve, how to, how to treat them. Areas that have, say, a system development charge for water that's three or four times what it is anywhere else, it's going to be awfully difficult to build affordable housing or non-executive housing up in an area like that.
Okay, so now Tom's going to talk us through what a new submittal would look like so that you can sort of see that comparison in terms of process, costs, and time as you think about giving direction on, on what path we're going to take moving forward. And we thought, when you, when you're thinking through, you gave us direction to explore a reman, and we thought that there would be value in comparing that reman response to what a new work would look like as you decide whether to respond to the reman, if that makes sense. Tom, do you want to do what DJ did and just work off of my computer screen?
Let me, let me try this here, see if I can navigate on this end.
Yours came up, Tom.
So, can you see that? Okay, is it full screen?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Let me make sure it's going to advance here.
You do, you do have your menu at the top, so it may not be completely full screen.
Okay. Thank you. Now, it's not advancing here.
Under the view, Tom just hit the full window.
Okay, is that okay? Now we're going to see that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so when we're, we talk about the new work, just kind of summarize what that is and where we are, what the status of that is, what the next steps in the process would be to, to take this through to completion, what some of the potential costs would be, and then some comparisons about where there are decision points that could be appealed within this process as well. So this is the work we started roughly July of 2018, doing the planning for a planning horizon of 2021 to 41 for an urban growth boundary and an urban reserve out through 2067. So I'll kind of give you a slide in a minute that shows the overview of the process. But we started with the needs analysis. So that's looking at what our demand is for that period, for residential lands, employment, and other lands, what the supply is in the urban growth boundary with the buildable lands analysis to determine how much capacity we already have and how much would be needed for expansion to accommodate any deficits. And we haven't yet moved on to the next step of starting to evaluate how to accommodate or where to accommodate that growth. We're still working on the needs piece. So as you're aware, that's been a process with a project advisory committee with some public outreach through that. But we haven't gotten to the point where we're taking those draft documents and taking those up for a more robust public process or taking those through a public hearing process for adoption. So some of the unknowns with the new work is really there's just potential for challenges or appeals at any step in the process, whether that's the local hearings through the McMinnville Urban Growth, urbanization, I can't remember what the acronym is, Urbanization Advisory Management Committee, I think. And through city council hearings. And then whether those decisions, any aspects of those are appealed, or again, similar to what occurred last time, whether any, even if it's approved by DLCD or LCDC, whether their decision is appealed. And so what DJ explained to you and what Heather laid out was essentially, and with the 2006 submittal, that, that completed everything in the process to expand an urban growth boundary. So they went through all the steps of identifying the needs, doing the alternatives analysis within the study areas, narrowing that down and selecting a preferred alternative, developing the land use plan for those areas to meet the needs, adopting all of the supporting plans, including all those public facility plans, writing the code language to implement those and update the zoning and the whole package. So I think Heather showed the screen that the, you know, housing needs analysis started in 2001. So we're, we're still on step one. We're doing the needs analysis. And we haven't moved into those other steps in the process yet. So again, there's, all of those decisions have a range of assumptions in them and some policy implications as to how we meet needs. So where we are with that needs analysis, it's not completely done yet. So those are the, again, the residential needs and buildable lands. Same thing for employment, public semi-public lands. You put that together in a urbanization report that summarizes all of those needs and the deficits together. And we also did a housing strategy at the same time we're doing the housing needs analysis. That's not a separate land use document, although it does inform potential implementation actions to meet housing needs. And some of it is not, there are implementation items that are not land use decisions. There, how can we help assist other agencies? Or how can we address, you know, financial or funding tools to help support affordable housing? So that's a little bit different than the others. For all those items, there are some finals, final items. We completed work with a draft with the project advisory committee at the end of February and had some additional direction to go back and review, update a couple items. So we need to complete that work. And so for all of those items, we need to wrap up those last tasks, distribute those back out to the project advisory committee. Again, take that through public vetting and public hearing. So those are all draft documents at this point. We also need to submit, we don't have to adopt or have a final draft, but we need to submit a notice of the proposals to DLCD in May. And then we'd move on into the alternatives analysis following essentially the new rules for how you go about establishing a study area and analyzing the lands within that to determine which ones are eligible for inclusion on urban growth boundary. Then if you have more lands than you need that are eligible, how you go about narrowing those down into your, your UGB proposal. Depending on how different or similar it is to the reman work. If we're starting fresh, then we'd be developing not just the boundary, but the plans to support those, doing some of that same type of analysis that DJ described for looking at serviceability and cost effectiveness in serving areas. And then, once there's a proposal identified, doing the essentially engineering level planning to develop the public facility plans and update some of the, update or in some cases, develop new plans that the city doesn't have now for things like GOAL V resources, which are wetlands and riparian areas and scenic resources and updating your inventory of any historic resources in those areas, as well as looking at any new hazard mitigation plans that would be needed. And then really doing all the implementation pieces with updating the code, adopting efficiency measures, doing any updates that are needed to the management agreement, looking at area planning for the different areas if that needs to be done in more detail. So that's, that's the, or next steps in this process. So to, under the new rules, to, to essentially evaluate how we go through selecting and evaluating areas, that's what DJ talked about, the new rules that were adopted in 2016. So I'm just going to kind of walk through that quickly. Essentially, you have to establish your preliminary study area, and I'll show a map in a minute. And it needs to include everything that's in an urban reserve if you have one, which we don't currently. Everything within a mile of the UGB. And then for a larger area, it needs to include all exception areas. And Heather showed a map of that earlier. I'll show another one in a minute. That are essentially within a mile and a half of the UGB and contiguous to other exception areas that are in that one-mile area. So, and then if the city wants to study a larger area, that's doable as well. It's a discretionary decision to broaden out that study area. So this is essentially the same map we looked at before. The, the yellow outlined, the inner ring is the one-mile boundary. So DJ talked about the study areas in the reman that were already established and evaluated. This would require going out to that one-mile area and looking at that. And then the exception areas that meet that description up to a mile and a half that I described if they are a continuation or contiguous to other exception areas in that inner ring. And this is just a, kind of a rough overlay to give you that perspective of the zoning out to those one and one mile, one-half mile buffers. So gives you a sense of where the EFU land is and where the exception areas are. So the steps for evaluating that and those designations are important when you start looking at the priority requirements that were required to follow to determine which areas are in the study area and which are then eligible for inclusion in the urban growth boundary. So within that preliminary study area, a city can exclude land if it's determined, the rule uses is impracticable. And that has not been adjudicated yet as to what that bar is to determine whether you've met it or not. But if you can exclude within that large study area areas that are impracticable to provide necessary public facilities or services to the land, you can exclude areas that are subject to significant development hazards. And then the administrative rules describe those in some detail. If there are essentially officially designated, mostly GOAL V resources, scenic, natural, cultural, or recreational resources that would be unavailable for development, those could be excluded from the preliminary study area. And then any lands that are owned by the federal government and managed primarily for rural uses. So on the initial public facility test to decide if you can exclude those from even being studied, impracticable goes on to say, here's what you can look at. So it gets really specific in terms of how big the area is, but it's mostly, you can exclude areas if it's at least five acres and is a very steep slope. exclude areas if it's at least five acres and is a very steep slope. If, I'm sorry, if the majority of the area is slope over 25%, but if there's a fair bit of land within there that's shallow, you can't exclude those if the bulk of that would be shallower slopes. If you end up with situations that are isolated from other service networks or there's other impediments, again, that's defined. So it's kind of like, it's tiered. Every time you look at the standard, there's a series of definitions with a lot of screening requirements. But essentially, you're able to look at, in considering whether there are impediments, can evaluate the amount of development that's likely to occur, likely cost of facilities and services. And you can consider evidence about how similar land has or hasn't developed in McMinnville or elsewhere in the region. So you're able to evaluate those things in narrowing down your preliminary study area. And the impediments, some of those are the things DJ talked about earlier. It includes things like water bodies where you need a bridge process, crossing, significant topographic features, things that would require great separation to have access to, and then officially designated resources. You cannot take an area out of your preliminary study area just due to existing development patterns. But if you have highly partialized areas, that may affect the capacity it's assigned. And then after you've excluded those from your preliminary study, you have to look at it and say, is, how big is this area compared to what our identified deficit is? And if it's less than two times your identified deficit, you have to expand your preliminary study area to include at least twice your land deficit. So once you get there, that's your preliminary study area. And then you've got to go through that evaluation process. So you look at those land priorities. You've got to look at in the highest priority down to the lowest priority, whether you can meet your need in the highest priority. So urban reserve, exception lands, or other areas that have an exception or non-farm or forest land. And if you have enough land in that, you have to evaluate those before you go down to the next category if they're in your preliminary study area. And then you would go through a suitability analysis of those lands going down each priorities tier. So again, with this, the, there's, we need to complete the needs analysis, the remaining steps in that work. We would need to go through that alternatives analysis, which again, would include some public facility analysis that some of that could piggyback on, work done in conjunction with the remand. Then go through essentially selecting your, your boundary and developing the plan for that, taking that through the, the hearing process, hearing and adoption process, preparing findings, dealing with any appeals on any of the components. And then depending on how different the, the outcome looks from the prior plan that was adopted, that plan has, the current public facility plans all would support. Essentially, if the original plan had been adopted, growth into those areas is accounted for in the public facility plans. If you end up with a different plan, then you need to put a higher level of effort into updating all of those. And then again, there are potential for appeals throughout this process. So there are legal expenses that are somewhat unknown, depending on what challenges are faced. So again, essentially, any decision, analysis or assumption that isn't a so-called safe harbor is subject to appeal at each step of the process. So what DJ described earlier was the fact that there's on the remand, there's one assignment of error. This leaves open challenges throughout the process. And that could be any of the, the needs analysis documents, could be the study, how the study area analysis is conducted and what's kept in the preliminary study area or taken out, and then what's suitable, once those lands are evaluated. Any of the supporting plans could be subject to appeal or the implementation items as well. So really, the, we've spent time and, and resources into doing the, the work that started in 2018. That's been a process with some public outreach to help develop those drafts and working with the project advisory committee, doing some public open houses. Some of the cons of starting with a new process takes away the ability to use the, the old process. So it starts all new and leaves us open to new challenges and appeals, going down a path that hasn't been used and tested. Again, so we're kind of the canary in the coal mine on some of the new, new process. Higher costs for doing the larger alternatives analysis and public facility plans. And I guess I already kind of covered the last bullet there. So that's kind of the overview or the, the main differences. We're starting from scratch and are kind of in uncharted territory and leaving everything kind of open to, to appeals again. So.
The last discussion, and we'll just work off your screen, Tom, is comparison of the two and, and in terms of time and costs and outcomes. So in terms of time, we would be looking at getting a response to the remand in by December of 2020, our submittal. In terms of new work, because of the larger study area that Tom just walked you through and some of the analysis associated with that, and then the public process, because again, there hasn't been a public process for this new work, we would probably be looking at 2022, December 2022 or 23 submittal. In terms of hard dollars, initially to do the work, we're estimating the remand's about 83,000 and potentially less expensive in terms of legal expenses as well as public facility planning. And then the new work is, the alternatives analysis would probably be about 260,000. We anticipate it, you know, based on history here, we don't know, but that there could be more challenges and appeals. And so the legal expenses could be higher and the public facility planning costs could be higher too because of the larger area. In terms of risk, the appeal, all appeals have been resolved on the remand except for one issue at this point in time. So there were challenges and appeals to a variety of different decision-making points through that process. And we're down to this one assignment of error. It's a big one, but it's the last one, right? And then for the new work, the adoption, we haven't even started an adoption process yet. So everything's on the table for challenges and appeals in that process. In terms of outcomes, so the table we sent you, the planning horizon, the population forecast for the planning horizon for the remand was looking at supplying land need for a total population of 44,000 people. And then the new work is looking at satisfying a land need for a total population of 47,498 people. So they're fairly close in size in terms of land need for the community moving forward. So the outcomes are remarkably similar in that regard. And then when we look at the, the table that we sent out to you, as DJ indicated, a lot of the data sets are similar as well in terms of housing needs. Actually, the remand was interesting to me to see that the remand, the density target was higher than it is for the new work and that there also is less R1 housing in there and more higher density housing in there as well. Okay, so there is an opportunity to leverage the work that we've done for the new work moving forward, and we wanted to outline some of that for you as well. So you could make a decision not to do the, respond to the remand and just tell us to just keep moving forward with the new work. And then we'll do that and we're set up to do that. We could then look at submitting for the remand, which takes us to a planning horizon of 2023, and then continuing from the process that we're in right now, moving forward with that process as a follow-up to the remand. So the, the remand's going to establish the UGB, and then we could look at an urban reserve area after that. You've heard a little bit about that in our past discussions, where we could add a 30-year urban reserve area to that UGB. We could look at updating the UGB if we felt that that was important, if the numbers were that far off in terms of the data sets, and look at a new UGB for 2041. And we could do a UGB update and an urban reserve area. That's a lot of work. I'm not sure I would recommend that after responding to the remand. But those are all ways that we can sort of leverage off the work that's been done and the remand work and continue to move it forward if that's a decision the city wants to make. I always like to add this. We spend a lot of time talking about data and numbers, and it's hard to put it in perspective of the families that we're serving, but the discussion we're having is about our future families in our community and how they are going to live and work here over the next 20 years, people who either want to move here or our children who want to stay here and establish their own family. So this is a very important discussion for us to be having and resolving. And with that, that is the end of our presentation. We're looking for some direction from you as council on how you want us to move forward.
Thank you, Heather and DJ for, and Tom for the thoughtful and well, I think, summarized approaches that we have. Just to give you a background, we have about 10 minutes before we open the council meeting, but let's open it up for the council that might have any questions for Heather, DJ or Tom. Go ahead.
Heather, I just have one question. The, the difference between the two plans or the two approaches seem to be about a half a million dollars, obviously a time difference. And one of the key numbers that I noticed, however, is that the, starting with the new plan would net us about 3,000 additional dwelling, dwelling units is probably the wrong. It'd provide us housing for about 3,000 more people. How big of a factor should that be in our decision-making, in your opinion, when evaluating the two plans?
That's a great question, and we've actually talked about that internally as well. You know, if, if our, if our interest was how do we get the most bang for the buck, you know, then, and, and we didn't have a critical need right now, then maybe following that new work would be where would we land and recommend you go because it is a larger population forecast. However, the reality is, the city is in a critical position right now in terms of land constraints and affordability, housing affordability. And we do think that there is a timeliness issue associated with this work, and we feel the remand will be, will be able to respond to it in a more timely manner. And not only that, but the 3,000 people in a population forecast, there's a lot of margin of error in population forecast. It's not, it's not a lot in terms of a difference there. We, we could be updating that population. Well, it does get updated every four years. So, you know, we'll be going through this work again in the next 10 to 15 years if we choose not to do a URA after, let's say if you want to do the remand and then we do, do not do a URA, we will probably be looking at this type of growth planning analysis again in about 10 to 15 years anyways.
Thank you.
Sal, did you have other?
Oh, no, it's okay, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Kelly? Yeah, we can hear you. No, you're off again.
Kelly, you're muted still.
You muted.
Try pushing your spacebar.
I knew, now it did.
There we go.
I, I thought it was interesting, the concept of doing this remand thing and, and then going ahead and looking at the urban reserve. I think that's what we wanted to do first anyway. So that would take care of the additional 3,000 or whatever down the road and then take care of our immediate needs. So I, I think that's a cool idea.
Yeah, the reason we put it out there is a lot of the work that we'll be doing in the remand could be work that could be leveraged to that future effort as well, so that we're not duplicating that work down the road, 10 years down the road.
And Heather, the remand would go, go forward first, and then we'd go up for that urban renewal that could take a, a longer period of time, but it would be just ongoing work, correct?
Yeah, so the remand, so based on what we recently learned from DLCD and their response to an urban reserve area, and again, Spencer, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would do the 30-year urban reserve after the UGB's been established, the 20-year.
That's correct.
In the past, again, we had wanted to do the urban reserve first, and then they told us that we couldn't, although other cities have been able to do it. So the whole idea of being able to get the UGB handled and then to go into the urban reserve using what we've built already sounds very appealing.
One other thing that I might add, Mayor, to, to, to keep in mind, even if the remand is successful and you're able to address your land inventory, we, we're focusing on the inventory issue because you're so short of land. You've been constrained for a very, very, very long time. But there are other components of your comprehensive plan, regulating mixed-use development, regulating affordable housing, incentives for affordable housing, streamlining your development review process that are all part of your comprehensive plan and your land use framework. And those work tasks can all be taken up as part of that follow-on process. The remand might solve the, a big part of your inventory problem, but that's, but there are still those other land use regulatory issues and implementation issues that, that you will still be confronting.
Yeah, and we would still have those even after doing the new works submittal too. We would have to confront those down the line. So McMinnville has spent a lot of time on growth planning, and as you've seen from some of the charts I've given you, a lot of other planning initiatives have been deferred because so many resources have gone into this growth discussion.
Other questions for Heather from the council?
Yeah, did I hear that right, that the deadline to decide on the remand is December 2020? Did I hear that right?
No, what you heard is we would want to submit by December 2020. The deadline to decide on the path moving forward ideally would be tonight or very, very soon because we've, we have been in a holding pattern since October, more or less, when we heard from the state that they may not support our original game plan. And, and we're losing time.
So again, the window for tonight is closing quickly. So any other questions before we have a decision to give staff direction as to where we'd like to go?
My question kind of piggybacks on Zach's is, do you feel even if we decided tonight or in the very near future, the state would still be accepting of, of this path forward? Because I know we've talked about it kind of being at the end of its rope anyways. So I hate to sink money into something that just have it kicked out because of time.
Yeah, so Angela unfortunately just emailed me and she said, I'm getting off because I have to get my kids dinner. But we have been in discussion with the state, with Gordon Howard and Steve Shipsey, and they have both confirmed that they're supportive of the city having the legal right to respond to the remand. And we have that in writing.
Other questions? Again, we're coming down just to a few more minutes in our work session.
With the state being on board, I, I would be more inclined to push this existing one forward than starting from scratch.
Yeah.
I, I feel the same way.
Okay. And so Kelly just put in front of us to take the remand and go forward with, but also structure process of an urban reserve. Are we all on board with that or do you just want to do the remand tonight and do the urban reserve at another work session? So Kelly, you're unmuted. What's your thought?
I, I strongly support that idea because again, we really desperately do need more land and we can benefit from all that we've done already, you know, and including building up on the, on the remand. But at least the remand gives us land right now and then moving into the urban reserve, we have a little more time.
Okay. Sal, what are, what are your thoughts?
I am for sure fine with going forward with the remand. I need to give a little more thought to the I need to give a little more thought to the urban reserve conversation. If that's the direction that staff is recommending and we want an answer tonight, I'd be inclined to go in that direction as well.
Okay. Wendy?
I was also leaning towards the remand and the urban reserve. A good strategy for us to take going forward. So at the end of the presentation tonight, that's what I would lean towards. That's what I would direct staff.
Okay. Adam?
Definitely in favor of the remand, the, the reserve. I would, I would rather us hold off on and let staff be laser focused on the remand and not, not spread more thinly and trying to get that reserve done at the same time.
And then Remy, you're on mute.
Yeah, and while I'm, I apologize for missing a, a, a bulk of the presentation. I have had the opportunity to meet with city staff about this and flush out other concerns previously, and, and I feel comfortable with the direction the council is taking.
Okay. And Zach, you're on mute. There you go.
Yeah, I think, I remember in our last discussion, one of the options was also a punt for a time being. And it sounds like the ship has sailed on that. So given what's in front of us, I'd be inclined to stick with the remand and lean more towards the remand only. But if there's additional work, it would be that urban reserve area. But I'm, I'm more inclined to just stick with the remand pursuit now.
Okay. And then, not that I have a vote, but I would personally want to go with the remand. I would like to see us move forward on the urban reserve, not as a priority, but go hand in hand with the things that we would need to be doing for that. We could do it in conjunction. And then once we got through the remand, then put full efforts on the urban reserve.
And so Mayor, if I, if I can sum up what I heard is the, the direction is to move forward preparing a response to the remand. The work that we'll put into that, we'll do it with cognizance that it could be work to support a future urban reserve area effort as well. But we'll focus on the remand at this point in time.
Any councilors have any other words? I saw some hands go up. I saw some smiles. So I think that's the direction, Heather.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank, again, thank you Heather, thank you DJ, thank you Tom for, and then the whole staff. I, I see others, Chuck and some of the others that are on the line with us. Thank the planning group for your hard work. Spencer, the legal counsel that you've given to us going through that. So again, thank you, and I think we have our, our direction. Okay. That, that will conclude our work session for this evening. And if I had my gavel, I'd go, we're closed. It is 7:03, which is going to take us to, and so if any... Evening. Wendy's back now, just for the record.
Yeah, here, sorry.
Not having everything right in front of me, but... Okay, the first item that we have this evening is a proclamation. And as I get to that document, it's a proclamation for Arbor Day. And it's a, a piece that we go through every, every year. And so I'm loading it up right now, so it will take just a few seconds. Again, I'm sorry, I should have, it says webpage crashed. I'm just going to kind of punt a little bit. I know Chuck, you are, you're on the line. And we typically work with you as we're looking at our Arbor Day and Tree America and the good work that's happening there. We do know that during the month of April is National Arbor Day. And the, the proclamation goes into a little bit of the history. And, and so outside of that, just from a, an area of, of protocol, I see that, let's see.
So Mayor, if I can, I'll take the lead on this. Jamie Kuppenstein is usually our planner for this, but he, he wasn't able to join us this evening. His family, but the Arbor Day proclamation is to declare Friday, April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day. The city has been participating in this for 23 years. Typically, we do an event, some sort of tree planting event. And the irony is, we've, in the last couple of years, have gotten better at our events and getting more people involved in them. But this year, we will not be doing an event that draws people. We will be doing an educational program for the community about the value of trees in our community. And we'll be putting that out in press releases and social media. And the Arbor Day Foundation has endorsed that. So, and I have the proclamation up on my screen if you want me to read it.
Could you? And I'm, I'm working towards getting it right now. Why don't you start and go ahead?
So the proclamation reads, whereas in 1872, Julius Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture, let a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, clean the air by absorbing 48 pounds of carbon dioxide each year per tree, produce life-giving oxygen and provide vital habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees can moderate the average temperature in a city by 10 degrees and can cut individual household heating and cooling costs by up to 25%. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas and beautify our community. And whereas the city of McMinnville is celebrating its 23rd, 23rd year as a certified Tree City USA, as recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal.
Okay, I found it, so I'll take over. I hereby, I hereby, I Scott Hill, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do proclaim Friday, April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day. And in the city of McMinnville, I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all city, citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote, and promote the wellbeing of this and future generations. In witness thereof, I have therefore set my hand and caused the seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed since the 14th day of April, 2020. Signed, Scotty Hill, Mayor, City of McMinnville. So again, thank you. And it is the 23rd year that we've been recognized and gone through that process. Thank you, Heather. We are now going to take comments from citizens. And the audience is invited to participate and provide comments. And any comments that are provided need to follow. Well, let me back up. This is something that we're going to do a little differently. Any comments that are going to be given this evening, we will assign a staff member to follow up if there's follow up that needs to be given. Again, comments are one-way coming to the council, and staff will follow up if that is needed. Again, the topic for comments would be any matter that is a matter in, that, anyone can speak on any topic other than a matter that is in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Again, we would announce, announce comments that they would be limited to three minutes. And if you could raise your hand or hit the raise hand feature on Zoom, our city recorder will call on those individuals. So do we, and, and just as a matter, a part of your packet this evening, we received comments from Jerry Hart talking about the presentation that Patty's going to give in just a few moments on the use of TLT dollars. And, and, and he, he presented a comment in written form that you all have. So is there anyone on the line that would like to present comments to the council this evening? And I'll turn it over to Claudia to see if we have anyone. Again, if you could push the, raise your hand.
We do have Mark Davis here at the council who would like to speak. So we can bring him up until we get someone.
Okay. Go ahead. Mark, it's good to see you. It looks like you're the lone guy there.
No, I think the fire department is well represented. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. I would like to thank the council for the, the time and effort they put into the Baker Creek North hearing. I know that it would have been easier just to kind of go, well, you know, we need the housing, let's just move forward. But I thought there was a lot of real thoughtful discussion and a lot of important issues got raised. You know, I'm a little disappointed that the momentum we have going for expanding the urban growth boundary seems to have been blunted by the COVID-19 stuff. But hopefully, you know, you've got a plan to move forward. As I've listened to the discussion of growth over the years, there's been a lot of, of talk about what's, what's pro and what's con. I'd like to just throw out a few of those things. I think we heard some of them during the Baker Creek North hearing. Some of the positives are provides needed housing, it's greater business choices, we get an expanded tax base, higher paying jobs, more parks are created, and we have additional cultural opportunities. On the other side, people speaking against growth seem to be concerned about these things. Traffic tie-ups, more crime, loss of open space, higher taxes, more homelessness, and the, kind of the loss of the small-town feel. Now, that's not everything that gets said, and some of those things I don't think are necessarily true. But, you know, it's your task as the council, I think, to try to maximize the positives and minimize the negatives. And, you know, I appreciate the effort you put into that. I'd, I'd like to just jump over a little bit to the discussion of your work session. I've got in front of me the, the Growth Management and Urbanization Plan. And I'd like to address one thing in specific, and that's the Neighborhood Activity Center. I mean, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about acreage and expansion and this. But, you know, some of how we implement the ordinances and what we, how we do that, I think is equally as important. I think the Neighborhood Activity Center is a great idea. I'm supportive of it. I'm glad to see we're going to move back in that direction. But, but I have to say that listening to the commentary during the, the Baker Creek North hearing, I didn't hear a lot of positive comments about that concept. Admittedly, it wasn't, you know, you weren't supposed to be judging it on that basis. But, you know, the, the developer treated the commercial area as like this unwanted stepchild. The public generally spoke against it, and the councils set a lot of conditions on it. And I think that, you know, if, if we, we need to do more educating and, you know, and to get the idea out that this is what we want to do, if in fact that is what we want to do. You know, I think the Neighborhood Activity Center and the Great Neighborhood Principles are, are in agreement about, you know, direction we should go in the city. But we need to have some ordinances as well as just getting some land that's actually going to, going to make something so when we have a hearing, that people can come and talk about things that are important about how we want to grow the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark, and points well taken. Any other comments for council this evening?
No, it's Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any on the screen, so we'll go ahead and conclude our comments from citizens. This evening, our first item of, or our fifth item of businesses presentations. And what a pleasure it is to have the legal counsel from the League of Oregon Cities. Patty, it's good to see you this evening. We really appreciate the role that you play. And this evening, we're going to have you do a presentation from the league to us on the uses of the TLT. So welcome, and it's great to see you.
Thank you. It's nice to be here, Mayor. I think I know quite a few of you on the phone. For those of you that don't, as the mayor said, my name's Patty Movahill. I'm the general counsel for the League of Oregon Cities. Prior to moving to Oregon, I was an in-house city attorney for Bloomington, Indiana, for about 13 years. So it's been a long time since I've been to an actual council meeting. Hopefully, these years end before midnight. That was our normal and my world. So I'm going to talk about local transient lodging taxes today. This is my first time giving a presentation virtually, so we'll see how I do it. Typically, I walk all over the place and talk with my hands. So we'll see if I can make this interesting virtually. Can you see my PowerPoint? Did I share the slide properly?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So we will start, presumably, if I can make my slide go. There it is. So you, McMinnville has its own lodging tax. And in truth, you actually have one of the easier types of lodging taxes in the sense that your lodging tax came in post 2003, which is good because you don't have to deal with any of the statutory grandfather provisions, which is where things get really, really complicated. When you guys enacted your ordinance, you started at an 8% rate. Since then, you've amended your ordinance several times. The screen kind of walks you through a brief history. But right now, you're at 10% for your local lodging tax. But like most things in life, if you've been in local government in Oregon long enough, you will know that the state has some pretty stringent preemptions on what localities can do. And one, in my humble opinion, of the most confusing ones has to deal with your ability to assess local lodging taxes and then how you can use them. Generally, what we like to say is that local lodging taxes in Oregon, you have what we call the 70/30 split. And a 70/30 split means that 70% of the revenue that you get from your local lodging tax has to fund tourism promotion or tourism-related activities, or finance or refinance debt for tourism-related facilities. And then the other 30% of that pot, you can use to fund non-tourism-related services. You can use that in your discretion for city services. The 70% split on its face seems easy because we all seem to think that we know inherently what tourism promotion is or tourism-related activities. Those should seemingly be pretty easily defined terms. But what you'll see is that presumably lawyers got involved, and we gave a bunch of different definitions for a bunch of different terms. And we took what we thought were really easily identifiable words and made them pretty complicated. So the first thing you can spend that 70% on is tourism promotion. In my opinion, that's probably the easiest definition that we have to work with. So some of it's obvious. You can use that money to advertise or distribute information to try and get tourists to come to your city. And I've highlighted tourists because it has a separate definition. And it's not quite as easy as it sounds because there's some, actually some pretty strict requirements on who you can call a tourist and who you can't. And they're not necessarily intuitive, in my opinion. You can also use 30%, you can also use 70% of that fund to conduct strategic planning to try and stimulate future tourism development. You can use that to operate a tourism promotion agency. Again, that's a different defined term that we'll get into later. Or you can market special events and festivals designed to attract tourists. So that's generally what tourism promotion means. So who's a tourist? A tourist is somebody who comes to McMinnville for business, pleasure, or recreation, comes for arts or heritage or culture. But they have to travel to McMinnville from a separate city that does one of two things. They either have to travel more than 50 miles from their community of residence, or they have to have an overnight stay in McMinnville. have to have an overnight stay in McMinnville. So if you read the definition at its core, if somebody just visits you from a city that's less than 50 miles away, even if they come for an all-day function and they don't spend the night, they're not technically a tourist under the statutory definition. So, am I a tourist? Um, and I'm seeing a whole bunch of muted, so I won't make it complicated so people have to get off. But these are questions that come up with the league that I think kind of help solidify why this definition is tricky. So when the pandemic is over, presumably I could travel to McMinnville, and I could give you guys another presentation on local lodging taxes. I live in Salem. Um, you can't see my house, but that's where I am at the moment. So if I traveled to McMinnville to give a present to your, presentation to your city council, and when I'm done, I drive back to the city of Salem, do I class, do I, would I be a tourist? Seeing some people shake your heads now. And it's because Salem's not 50 miles away, and I didn't stay the night. But to complicate it, if you invited me and you were like my old city council and your meeting was going to run till midnight, and you said, we're so sorry we made you stay here till midnight, Patty, we'll put you up in a hotel, then I would count as a tourist. So it makes it a little tricky sometimes to identify who is or who is not. So the second one is a more obvious one. So, um, Jane Doe lives in Medford. She comes every year to your UFO festival, which I just heard has been pushed back a few months. Sorry about that. She would obviously be a tourist because she's traveling more than 50 miles. And this is kind of the reverse of what I said. Let's say you had a resident from Wilsonville who came to McMinnville for your holiday parade and tree lighting festival. They wanted to make a day of it. They knew they were going to be there at night, have a nice dinner, maybe some cocktails, and they stayed at the Atticus Hotel. Even though they didn't travel 50 miles because they stayed the night, you could classify them as a tourist. And the reason I want to highlight this is because a lot of times when people call the league, they say, why is it so complicated? Why can't you just give me an answer as to whether or not somebody is a tourist? It's because we have to go through all these machinations to decide, do you qualify or do you not? So we know what a tourist is, then we also can use the money to help us fund a tourism promotion agency. This one, in my opinion, can get tricky because you have to really look at the type of organizations that are allowed to be a tourism promotion agency. So if you, if you read the definition on this slide, you can be an incorporated nonprofit organization or a governmental unit that is responsible for tour, tourism promotion on a year-round basis. So there's a lot in there. They've got to be a nonprofit, a government, and they have to be focused on a year-round basis. The second one, it can be a nonprofit again, that manages tourism-related economic development plans, programs, and projects, or you can have a regional or statewide association that represents entities that rely on tourism-related business for more than 50% of their income. And so if you go to the next slide where we walk through whether or not it is, so in 2014, the city council created Visit McMinnville. Is Visit McMinnville a tourism promotion agency? We've got one or two people shaking their heads, yes. Yes, they would qualify because it's a local government, so you meet that criteria, and presumably they're focused on tourism year-round. Let's say McMinnimans in downtown McMinnville decides they want to develop and manage tourism-related economic development plans. Would they qualify as a promotion agency? No, because they're a private corporation. And remember, the only people who can do it, you've got to be a nonprofit or a government. The last one, hoteliers in the Mid-Wellamette Valley create a new association all on their own. It's nonprofit, and they want to help them promote their own hotels. The association receives 75% of its funding from the hotel themselves when they constitute a tourism promotion agency. Somebody is shaking their head, yes or no? I would say yes, because more than 50% hotels rely on tourist dollars to stay in business, and more than 50% of the money the agency is using to advertise them is coming from those hotels. Makes sense? So if I'm going to put it all together, you can use 70% of your funds to advertise or publicize or distribute information about your upcoming events or the city itself as a tourism destination, provided you're gearing it towards tourists, and a tourist has to be somebody who either travels 50 miles away to come see McMinnville, or they stay in the night, or you can do it for an agency that's conducting strategic planning on how to bring tourism to McMinnville, or it can be one of several different types of nonprofit or government organizations that focus on tourism promotion in some instances year-round, or in some because their business comes from 50% or more of businesses focused on tourism. That's the first part. Clear as mud, right? What is a tourism-related activity? In my opinion, this is where the bulk of the questions come from of late about T L T. It's also where I think the next biggest phase of litigation is going to come from, and it's where, quite frankly, the league has been trying to find some wiggle room in terms of new, um, legislation in each legislative, legislative session the last three or four terms. Some successfully, some not. Um, so the first is obvious theoretically. A tourism-related activity is a conference center, convention center, or visitor information center, or it's any other type of improved real property with a lifespan of 10 years that has a substantial purpose of supporting tourism or accommodating tourist activities. Do you guys think that you have a conference center or convention center in McMinnville? Nope. And the reason why is again because of the way we define it. So we define a conference center as something that's owned or partially owned by a governmental unit or nonprofit agency that meets the current membership criteria of the International Association of Conference Centers. So one of the handouts I sent with you, um, that you should have in your packet, if you look at what those quality standards are, they're really hard to meet. And in fact, you can go to their website, and it will identify the facilities that have actually met those qualifications. There wasn't a single one in Oregon. So even the Portland Convention Center either is not qualified or asked for qualification to be certified as this because they're pretty stringent requirements. So to have one of those in a city your size would, would be amazing, to be honest. But take a look at those when you have some time because it's been pretty interesting from my perspective as to how detailed those were. So you guys already kind of shook your head no, so I won't go through all these because I know you have a long meeting. Um, but your community center, while some people may think of that as a convention center because you can have meeting space, in fact, the league's rented it ourselves, um, it, it doesn't, probably because it doesn't meet the criteria of the Association of Conference Centers. The Salem Convention Center could presumably if it meant those association standards. Um, and then Salashan Resort, the league sometimes holds conferences there, it could not because it's a private company. It's not a nonprofit or a governmental organization. And then on addition to that being a conference center, you can also have a convention center. And that one is going to be more like the big, like when we think of the Portland Convention Center, because when you look at the requirements for that, you've got to have a lot of space to hold a lot of people. Um, so you've got to be able to hold not just regional or local, you've got to be able to apply to international and national markets. You've got to have meeting room and ballroom space that is one-third to one-half the total size of the exhibition space. Um, most, um, the majority of your business has to come from tourists. You have to have a room block relationship with at least one hotel. Um, and again, it has to be owned by a local government, a government agency, or a nonprofit. So it, it's got to be a pretty sizable, um, facility in order to meet the definitional requirements. So again, um, the McMinnville Community Center would be the closest that you could equate it to, but it's not going to probably meet the size and spacing requirements. The Portland Convention Center would meet it because it can meet all of the spacing requirements, it is international, um, and it does have significant relationships with many area hotels. And then you've got a visitor information center. Um, this one, the key part here to focus on is the word main purpose. So if you look at the definition, it doesn't have to be a full building. So it can be a portion of a building in order to constitute a visitor information center, but the main purpose of the building or the portion of the building has to be to distribute or disseminate information to tourists. And that's the key word. It has to be the main purpose. So it can't just be something ancillary or secondary to what you're actually using the building for. Um, so if you went back to the community center and you said, okay, we're going to set aside the library or the lobby, and we're going to put a bunch of brochures out there and some travel materials so that people who are coming in for, you know, basketball games or what have you can take a look, and we can try and promote it that way. You probably can't call that a visitor information center because that's not the main purpose of the building. It's probably not also the main purpose of that area of the building. But I was in Klamath Falls last year, um, around winter time because, in case you care, they have a huge migration of bald eagles. We saw like 300 in one day. Um, and they have a visitor information center. Its sole purpose is to have visitors come so they can learn about the area, you can pick up tours there. That is in fact a visitor information center under the statute. And then the big one, what types of real property support tourism or accommodate tourist activities? So the big one that we hear a lot of times from cities, um, is, well, what if we have a road that goes to a tourist center? Or what if we have pipes that go? The coastal cities will regularly say, hey, you know, we only have 2,000 residents, but we get, you know, 20,000 residents on the, 20,000 visitors on the weekend, so we have to have, you know, six full-time police officers year-round. Can we use it to pay for some of those costs? You know, can we buy a police vehicle because that's real, you know, something hard? Can we do something like that? Um, and the answer is probably not, but we're not 100% sure. And the reason is, is because there's no statutory definition of what, um, a tourism accommodate tourist activities constitutes. We don't have a statutory definition. Uh, the courts also haven't actually made a decision about what that term means yet. The city of Bend is involved in some litigation about this particular statute, but it's not related to this term. It's actually related to their old grandfather tax, so we don't expect to get any clarity from that case. The only thing we have is a 2008 opinion from the attorney general. Um, and what I like to always point out with attorney general opinions is they're not what we like to call binding in the legal world, um, but they are advisory. So what essentially it means is that the court doesn't have to take the attorney general's opinion, but they do give it a lot of discretion, um, and they do consider it persuasive to the argument. So generally, what you'll see attorneys do is they'll say, well, we don't have to follow that advice. The courts are going to look pretty favorably on it, so it's, it's more appropriate to rely upon it. It's the safer course of action, um, and we should probably follow that advice, but you don't have to. Um, the great thing about being in charge is that you can listen to your attorney's advice, and then you can ignore it. So what the 2008 opinion essentially said is that what the legislature probably meant was that you could use some of that 70% of your local tax dollars to pay for roads, sewers, or transportation facilities i- if they're actually serving a specific tourist attraction itself. So let's say, for example, you, you're on the coast. So one of the examples the AG opinion points out to is you've got an actual, let's say, rest area on the beach, and it's a city road that's connecting you to the beach, and that road is, got a pipe buried underneath it, and the only reason for that pipe is because you got to have sewer and water to that rest station. You could probably say that pipe and that sewer could probably classify for funding it because the only reason it's there is to, is so that the tourist's location itself has a restroom. That would be okay. Now, can you use that money to fund other pipes throughout the city, say for housing in the area, for city hall? Probably not, because that road and that pipe isn't really supporting a tourist activity in and of itself. So it's really supposed to be gearing you directly to a tourist site. So what we've been trying to do at the league, um, like most things, is trying to whittle some of the preemptions that we've seen coming out. We thought we were going to have some success in 2019, to be honest. Um, we had two bills that went forward that tried to whittle away and give cities some more discretion into how to fund, um, how to use that 70% of your allocated local lodging tax. Um, House Bill 3134, we got the farthest on. Uh, we got it into committee. We thought we even had some agreements with, um, with the industry on this one, and it, and it fell apart, quite frankly, at the last minute. But what it, what have allowed us to do was to spend local lodging tax revenues, um, for, on tourist events and sporting events to include public safety costs associated with those events. So I'm going to assume when you have your UFO festival, you've probably got police officers working overtime, you may have to call more in, you may even have fire department officials on call just to kind of do crowd control and make sure that everything works the way. What the bill was designed to do was to allow you to use some of your local lodging tax to offset some of those increased costs you would incur. Um, but it failed at committee. We do think because we had movement and agreement in theory, um, from the tourism industry that we might be able to bring that one forward again in the 2021 session and hopefully get some, some momentum on that one. Senate Bill 595 was an interesting one. Um, we've had a lot of cities, particularly in the metro region, say, hey, we'd like to be able to use some of that pot of money, um, to help us fund affordable housing because we have an affordable housing shortage, and we'd like to be able to use it. It got a little bit of traction, but not a lot. Um, for those of you that have been following the ever-present rumor mill of late, um, there has been some suggestion that the legislature and the governor may try and call a special session in the next couple of weeks to try and deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, it's my understanding that in some of the discussions about emergency relief, um, they're trying to throw in some discretionary funding, funding for affordable housing, which tells me that affordable housing continues to be an issue, and it continues to be one that's gaining traction with several major leaders in our legislature. And so you could see some version of Senate Bill 595 come back again in the 21 session because I think they're really interested in trying to free up whatever dollars they can for that. So there's a chance, if I'm holding out for anything, something like Senate Bill 595 may come back for us. That's generally what I have for you tonight. I will tell you that you can call the number that's on that screen, but you're going to go to voicemail because our offices are closed. So if you have a question and you need the league, uh, the best way to get ahold of us right now is to send an email, uh, because we're checking voicemails once every 24 hours and then funneling them out to everyone. Um, I can answer any questions that you may have. If you've got anything, I'm happy to try and help.
So let's open it up for any of the counselors, any questions that you might have for Patty. Again, Patty, thank you for taking a complicated topic and, and whittling it down so it's much more user-friendly, so to speak, but there's still a lot of ambiguity around it. So let's open it up for anyone that would have a question.
Patty, thank you. Adam Garvin here. Apologies if I missed this in your presentation, but I was curious, um, with relation to the COVID stuff, how the 70% side of T L T dollars can be used for, uh, impact relief, similar to what Beaverton did with their grant program up there for some of their hotels? Where that line gets drawn as far as, uh, is there any way restaurants can get that if they're kind of tourism-heavy restaurants?
So I think what, um, what, um, Beaverton or, I don't know if it was Beaverton or Washington County, I know what you're talking about, they're using some of the relief funds. I think that's, um, an interesting gray area of the law. Um, this is going to be one of those annoying legal questions. I can make an argument that what they're doing is absolutely permitted, and I can make an argument equally strong that that wasn't the intent and they shouldn't be doing it. Um, so what I would say is this one is kind of untested at the moment. I think there's valid arguments on both sides, and it's going to come down to kind of the risk-reward weight that different cities have to do. Um, and different cities and quite frankly, counties are in different positions. So, uh, Washington County's got multiple full-time attorneys on staff, so if they're wrong and they get sued, they've got a bunch of attorneys they don't have to pay for, whether they work 40 hours a week or 80 hours a week, they get paid the same amount. Same thing with the city of Beaverton. You're going to have smaller cities who don't have in-house counsel where their risk-reward is quite frankly a different balancing, um, because making that decision and running the risk of litigation or challenge is going to look a lot different. Um, I will tell you that I think right now with the pandemic and the impact it's had on the economy, you're going to see a more sympathetic legislature, but I don't know if that translates into a more sympathetic judiciary, um, if it does get challenged. So it's kind of a balancing act at the moment, and it's one that I think each city needs to weigh individually with their council.
Patty, sorry to interrupt Adam. Could I have a follow-up to Adam's question, which is that, um, of the lawsuits that have been filed against cities for using different methods other than the list of what you gave, say along the lines of what Adam's talking about, who has brought lawsuits against cities? Is it only Orla primarily, or is it other groups?
So there's not, so when I, when I do my legal research, what I can see is what's made it up to at least the Court of Appeals. Um, so I don't get to see every lawsuit at the circuit court level, and the only ones that have come up to the Court of Appeals are with Orla, and in conjunction with Orla, like unnamed hotel, um, or a, a named restaurant per se, but it's mostly Orla leading the charge. Um, that's not to say there hasn't been ones at the circuit court level, I just don't have access to those.
Got it. Okay, so in the case of, um, what Adam mentioned, I think it was the Washington County Visitors Association that had done that. So in that case, if it seems unlikely that Orla would file a lawsuit against a Visitors Association that's basically made up of their own members? I'm just trying to weigh the, I'm trying to weigh the risk here.
So, so I, so I, prefaces by saying I'm, I'm an attorney, so I, I generally believe the worst in everybody, and I'm not surprised by anything that anyone does. Um, I, I agree with you. I would like to think that the Washington County Visitor Center is giving I would like to think that the Washington County Visitor Center is giving money back to a clearly a tourism center. You know, these hotels and these stuff so that they don't go bankrupt and they can continue operating. And why would Orla ever file suit or anyone else? But I can't answer that. What I, what I would suggest is that if it's something that McMinnville or even your own county wants to consider, I, I would bring in whoever your current attorney is, because I know you don't presently have your, an in-house one, and say, walk me through what your opinion is. Because at the end of the day, attorneys exist because there are reasonably different interpretations of the law. And so you want whomever is going to take you, who's going to go to court with you, to have their opinion and their advice be the one you rely upon and, and not somebody else. So I, I would weigh it and see what is there. I think it's interesting, to your point pragmatically, I wouldn't want to be Orla suing for somebody bailing out one of my members right now. But I'm, I'm, I'm never not surprised by what ends up in litigation.
Can I ask a related question? City of Seaside declined to collect the tax for the first three months of this year. And so as I understand it, based on the, the reading, that allows the hotels to keep all of the receipts for the first quarter. So it's essentially a windfall for the hotels. Is that basically what happened and how does that fit into your analysis?
So what I would assume, so it's your local tax. So my guess is, and I didn't, I didn't know about Seaside. My guess is they probably have a provision in their ordinance or they just passed a rule saying we're not going to enforce it at this time. So yes, essentially what the city council probably said is we've got, we've got a problem and you guys are hurting for cash right now. So we're just not going to collect. You guys keep it to help yourself keep afloat. It would be like any other discretion that a city council would have with their own ordinance. They're just not enforcing it, my guess. I'd have to pull what they actually did, but my guess is they just made a decision not to enforce and collect. And it's their ordinance, they can do what they want. There's probably a provision and I'd have to pull it.
Right, but if, so that would not, so just simply not collecting the tax would not run afoul of the state statute?
Correct, because it's the local tax.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Oh, wait, one last question. The city of Kaiser used, according to their mayor, used the transient lodging tax to fund some portion of their, I'm going to use the word convention center. I think that's pretty loose in Kaiser's case. How does that, like, how could they get funding for that particular facility where, based on your analysis, the community center probably wouldn't qualify unless we had a specific area in the community center that was specific to tourism?
Sure, so I've been in Kaiser, I think they call it their civic center, actually, if I remember correctly. So I've been in Kaiser Civic Center and it is actually, I think civic center makes it seem like it's a civic center and it really is almost more like a convention center. I think their largest space can hold up to like eight or 900 people in rounds and they've got like four or five breakout rooms as well. And my guess is they actually meet some of the standards and some of the national associations and they have the breakout room and the exhibitor space. It really, I mean, if you haven't been there, it almost in some ways actually looks like the Salem Convention Center. They just built it directly attached to their police station and city hall.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Patty? Go ahead, Adam.
You mentioned in your presentation about if we have an event like Alien Days or something like that, you could use TLT dollars to pay for police or whatever type of first responder staffing that would be needed. Did I interpret that right or no?
So sort of. We had a bill put forward in the last legislative session in 2019 where we asked to be able to spend revenue that way and it died in committee despite having pretty broad-based support on both sides of the aisle. So we will be bringing that back in the 21 session and we think that we can probably get it passed this time.
That was the 595 you cited?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and I can't remember numbers off the top of my head. So yeah, no, that one would have been House Bill 130, or yeah, House Bill 3134.
Thank you.
Other questions? I don't see the waving of any hands. So Patty, thank you so very much. I, I think you've given us some real food for thought and in our discussions and just to have your legal expertise and, and your support at the, at the league. We'd surely appreciate that. And if you'd even take back to Mike, how much we're in, how much we're enjoying our Friday calls and the updates that the league is doing for cities across the state, invaluable. And the kind of visitors that are on the line talking and giving us instruction is, is very helpful. So if you could tell Mike and again, it's good to see you.
I will. Thank you all very much for having me. I appreciate, oops, I do see a hand. Is that for me?
Adam, yes.
Actually, just, I was curious if Jeff Knapp would like to weigh in on anything.
Yeah, I'm just going to do just a brief presentation after Patty's completed.
Okay.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
And next we just have a, a brief presentation from Jeff of Visit McMinnville. Welcome, Jeff.
Hi, everyone. I'm glad to see your faces. It's, it's getting very lonely here. And I must excuse, if my, if my daughter runs in this room, I've tried to trap her, but you may see her. So I'll try to keep this short and sweet tonight. Thank you for your time. I've got about 10 minutes that I'd like to run through as we are in a really different place than we were just a few weeks ago. And we are in the process of coming up with our business plan and we're talks about the contract. So we wanted to have, take this opportunity to give the little presentation, touch base with you, make sure we're on the right path as we talk over the next couple of weeks. So needless to say, the last month has been a shock for the entirety of our community and the world. It's an unsettling time for everyone and most certainly for the local businesses and the visitor economy. So one thing to note is I wrote a lot of this down too, just so that I could not forget it in this strange setting. So we've been planning over the last several months and intended to deliver a really different strategy and plan to you as a council. Where we were just five weeks ago is, is a completely different place than where we are now. Thanks for the opportunity to talk with you and provide you some things to consider as we do move forward in this conversation about our, our hopefully contract with renewal with you all and this discussion as it plays out over the next two months. So my intention tonight is to do three things. And one, give you a brief overview of what we've done, where we've come from over the last five years. Two, how we are recommending moving forward, both as an organization and for McMinnville as a destination, given the new post-COVID lens that we're looking through. And then three, a quick update on how we're operating right now during COVID-19, along with our plan to come out of this as quickly and impactful as possible. So starting with the first thing, we're really proud of the work that we've done on behalf of McMinnville over the last five years. We had a really strong foundation built on the work, much the work the city council and our board of directors put in forming us and keeping us very focused to direct our efforts and resources where they were the, where they would make the biggest impact on local business. We looked at the first five years like this. Let me see if I can pull this up here, hopefully. In the first five years, we were just getting off the ground. We were planting the seed. We were able to start a successful trusted organization. We've secured dozens of national and international earned media pieces with millions of impressions. We were lucky enough to receive the highest industry acknowledgement for our work in the state. We've supported over 25 new visitor-facing businesses open and the jobs associated with those. We redirected work, sorry, redirected funding, leveraging grant funding from our work with the Wamit Valley Visitors Association and the, and we formed the Yamo County Tourism Partnerships to funnel resources back into our community. We were able to move the, the national perception and international perception of the epicenter of Oregon wine being Dundee to McMinnville and we're really proud of that. And we're seeing the, the returns on that. We helped, we've worked closely with the city and economic development partners to create an economic development plan that will guide the cities as a north star for economic development over the next 20 to 30 years. And a lot of other things. I'll, I'll stop boring you with, with all of that. But we, needless to say, we're looking forward to the challenges and opportunities at the next level. And what we're doing is we're taking this and looking at it in five-year chunks. Our original plan was to come to you today and discuss an amplification of diversifying our destination and development efforts. And we heard you loud and clear that we should be focusing and, and continuing to discuss efforts and strategies not to just leverage the visitor economy, but to also improve the quality of life for citizens. Five weeks ago, we were poised to bring a whole new menu of efforts that we would be focusing on. And we certainly will prioritize working to get back to that place where we feel that that's a reality. But the reality that we're currently in right now is that we are likely two years out from that being an appropriate course of action. I know that in a crisis like that, people look to leadership to help. They want answers, they need support. I feel it every night when I lay in bed and think about all of my friends', businesses that are suffering right now. And I'm such a doer, what, what is there that I can do? Fortunately and unfortunately, our, our destination's greatest strength is that we're made up of local small businesses that are unique. And, and it's a, it's a business environment where everyone knows everyone and it supports everyone. To the downside, it kills all of us to watch our neighbors and friends suffering when something like this happens. So I know that there's been a lot of questions about the use of TLT to do something meaningful and impactful in our community during this crisis. I share that desire as well. The fact of the matter is that we are a small destination. And our organization, as well as from what I understand, City of McMinnville don't sit on large reserves of funding to deploy for, you know, economic situations like this. It's just, if historically, if Visit McMinnville's doing its job properly and we are leveraging that money as it's coming in to, you know, encourage people, as many people as possible to come here. So to that end, we feel like the best use of our dollars in the immediate future will be to deploy a data-driven, targeted, well-crafted campaign to get people back to our local businesses as fast as possible and as safely as possible as we move through the new landscape of the COVID leaves us sitting in and bring the new normal to, to light, whatever that is. And we're going to be ready to do so and do so, do so quickly. The good news is that we have us, we have Visit McMinnville. We're, we are a very competent organization. We've got our, our feet wet. We've been history of success. And we will weather this pandemic and come out on the other side of it with our pedal to the floor. To McMinnville's favor, I just want to let you know that we are the type of destination that we feel will have a leg up on other destinations and turn a potential bounce back from this. Our rural location, our space that we have to explore, the type of food and beverage, leisure travel, the fact that we don't hang our, our hat on large conferences and convention centers and we don't hang our hat on Six Flags over Texas makes us an ideal place for people to decide to re-enter that engagement of visitation. And I think with well-crafted wine, no, with well-crafted targeted information, which we talked about, we can, we can get them back here quicker than many of our other, other cities around us. So we're thinking about our strategy in long-term. Can I take you through a little bit of the, for the future? And I'm going to now show you hopefully the next slide here, which is, we're looking at this as strategic milestones. So we're thinking of this as a plan. In our first one to five years, our efforts were all about planting the seed, just getting started. Can we, can we be effective? Can we have trust? Can we move the needle? And we've done that. We, we, the next five years, we feel like should be about fertilizing the efforts. We're just getting started. Should be about strengthening partnerships, identifying our immediate opportunities. Can we, you know, what other types of businesses can we attract and facilitate? And how do we first and foremost, make sure the businesses that we have are thriving again? And then as we're looking out and during the next five years, we're, we're going to be looking at opportunity analysis and investment on what that could be when our destination is a little bit mature and growing in that 10 to 15-year range. And I don't have things filled out for growing and maturing because we don't know what that's going to be. And it would be, we are working with the city's economic development plan, the urban growth boundary plan, and everyone to figure out what we, we think might be worth doing here. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to operate this. There we go. All right. So where am I at? Thanks for sticking with me. The one thing that is certain is that our plan's going to need to be flexible. We are currently anticipating a minimum of 50% decrease in revenue, which is completely different. And I haven't even talked to Jeff Towery about that. But given all of the different Zoom meetings and national forecasts and regional conferences that we've been on, we're looking at a 50% decrease, which is going to put our revenue, as well as the city's portion, back to somewhere where we were around 2016. On a positive note, we are excited that we now have the Economic Vitality Leadership Council, which is a diverse group of local business leaders to help bring additional connection to the work that we do as a result relates to the entire overall economic development plan for the city. And at the end of the day, we hope that you look to us as trusted partners and know that we are working tirelessly to see our community be the best that it can be. As you heard tonight, the dollars that we have currently are protected by Oregon statute and can be used in a very specific manner. You also heard that some people are interested in changing that law to have more flexibility. We can debate opinions on the future legislative efforts. They may change and we will change as that changes. But right now, we've got work to do. We know what is effective and we know what we need to do right away. So right now, within that legal framework, we hope that you rely on, on our recommendations and the best way to move forward in the immediate future and, and focus on what should be done. So if there's one thing that we have proven is if you give us direction as an organization, we're going to crush those goals. And we have, we know we've got strong partners with you here at the city. So we're looking forward to discussing our recommended business plan and contract in the upcoming couple of months. Our plans will be flexible. We know that there, if there's one thing that we are learning from this COVID situation is that flexibly, flexibility in planning ahead is paramount. So I'll leave you really quick with what we're doing right now, what we are doing in light of the COVID situation. And I will pull up a screen here. We are working closely with, we've ceased all external paid marketing efforts and are focused on local support for local business messaging. We're working closely with the stable table on collaborative projects such as looking into grants. Right now, we're looking at Oregon Community Foundation grants. Last week, we were looking into USDA grants to help support businesses on the ground. We are currently supporting a database, which, a project. We have a local website developer, Buildable, who has volunteered to build a community-based website that will allow people to know what businesses are open and what they're offering right now. We've helped by donating our time and energy to supply that database with accurate data, information. We'll be launching a new community pride campaign, which will be called Our Roots Run Deep, which will focus on McMinnville history, pride and resiliency efforts and connect resources to go with those things. That's going to launch in the next week. And we are monitoring travel sentiment with a plan to deploy as quickly as we can post-COVID. And I want to show you what that is so that you can see what, that we are, we're, we're taking into consideration, and I'm not going to leave this up for very long, but please, you can dive into that. But essentially, it's a ready, set, go plan with how we will be communicating to people where they're at and, and what they're expecting during this time of, from quarantining to re-quarantine to becoming, you know, used to some social distancing regulations and then hopefully as quick as possible back to business as normal. I did want to show you this other slide real quickly that I went past. This is our historic TLT collections from 2014 to 2019. You can see a pretty big increase. You can see where we ended up with 2019. The red part is the city's 30% or 31%. And ours below is that mandated 70% or 69% once we lose the admin fees. So you can see with a 60%, or excuse me, 50% roughly reduction, we're going to be looking back around the 2016 numbers. And you can see what that would result at, a pretty big hit to the both cities' coffers and hours. So in closing, what we're asking you is, as we move forward, are three things. One, when thinking about our future contracted partnership with the city, please consider our request as it comes forward to potentially extend our contract duration. It helps facilitate a much more focused cohesive effort by our organization. Two, we hope that you will consider supporting our proposed business plan that will be primarily focused on deploying all efforts in our toolkit to get business back to our local stakeholders first and foremost. And trust that as we come out of this crisis, our efforts and focus will shift to include more focus on improving the destination that we have, both for visitors and citizens within the statute. And three, understand that we're committed to continue to invest in research and data to help drive the city's economic And three, understand that we're committed to continue to invest in research and data to help drive the city's economic development plan. And we are committed to working with the Economic Vitality Leadership Committee to achieve the city's goals. One last thing, we should be receiving tomorrow, we've, prior to COVID, we hired Dean Runyon to give us the first in-depth visitor economic development impact study that is McMinville-specific. And we'll be using that and sharing that with the city from this point forward, investing in that every year, which will be a good benchmark. Well, not next year, it'll probably look really bad, but it will give us some good idea about some interesting metrics to drive decision-making. So thank you for your time. If you have questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Jeff, for that report and kind of getting our minds focused on that discussion we'll have with you later in the, I guess, in the next couple of months. Any questions specific for Jeff while we have him in front of us from the council? Wendy?
Hi, Jeff.
Hi, Wendy.
Thank you for coming in to talk with us tonight.
Thank you for all of your service.
I wanted to, I have a couple of comments and also a question. My, my thoughts are, I'd like to express how much we appreciate all of the effort that you're putting into supporting our local businesses in this new, new reality that we're faced with. I know it's hard on all of us and I appreciate you, your flexibility to be able to, to pivot and to be, utilize some of the creativity you were previously utilizing for tourism, advertising to look into how you can strengthen our local businesses that are tourism-based. Having that being said, having a lot of relationships with our small businesses that are tourism-based. I know one of the big threats that we face is having businesses that just can't come back from this. Do you have any feel for what kind of loss we might have in that? And I know you're, you're not, you know, you don't have a crystal ball, but just have, being so close to it. Do you have any feel for that level of risk for us locally?
You know, there will be a percentage of small businesses that don't make it out of this. It's really hard to look through a crystal ball to give numbers right now. I can tell you that I think what could make the biggest impact, at least for, from what I've been talking to, the, the businesses that I've been speaking with, are the costs associated, I mean, especially for tourism businesses. They're, they're usually service providers that, food providers or provide, especially in restaurants concerns, they're going to need capital to get, to get back up, to get product in the, in the, in the door, that's, you know, perishable product and to take that risk. So all of the loan programs that are essentially being offered, I, I don't know on the federal level what that, how that's going to support everyone. I haven't heard of yet anyone being paid out locally for those things. I know of a lot of people applying, and I know there's some small efforts on the county. But we can expect, you know, there will be business closures. It's going to be a different landscape. I think people also, their shopping habits for retail and for products are going to be changed for, you know, people are going to be used to shopping online and make it really comfortable with that. So we need to be focused on how can we get, how can we work collaborative to, within the new paradigm? And it's just a day-to-day crystal ball right now, unfortunately.
That actually leads well into my next question. What if you were to give us, I mean, you alluded to it, our, the local governments don't necessarily have a big pot of money they can dip into. But do you have any thoughts about how the local government, the city council can best support the businesses that are suffering the most, which are mostly into tourism?
You know, I think that right now, the most viable options that, that I have seen and, and talking with all of the rest of the Stable Table are potentially grants that may need some sort of matching fund. And I don't know what, where that, I am not putting that on the city by any means, but there are certain ideas of potential revolving loan funds, much like we have from Europe. But maybe you're focused on economic recovery, if, if there's any way that we could get, we had, I had an idea to facilitate a program like that by applying for, for some USDA dollars. That didn't timing work out for us, but we may be, have an opportunity to go back for that. If, you know, I don't have an answer, and that's the worst part of it. I sit on, but I hope that with the Collaborative Brain Trust, and I, I, I can tell you that M E D P, the Chamber Downtown Association, the city, we're all meeting regularly, asking each other these questions and trying to call together all of the resources that we do have. We don't have, in the future, maybe we have a, in that, maybe we have an economic development recovery fund that started from this. So if that's a priority for the city that we look forward to. But right now, we're, it's just making it up, creative ideas and, and giving folks the resources that, that we know are out there.
So my last question is, so I know that, that there's a lot of conversation going on with regards to Stable Table and, and you guys, what about the involvement of the local businesses that are actually suffering? Are they communicating? Is there a, a connection going on with regards to that for supporting each other through it?
I think each organization is definitely in contact with their members. We're staying very in close contact with lodging and restaurateurs and, you know, sending out, I, I think everyone's a little stakeholder newslettered out right now. There's so much coming at you. So yeah, I feel like, I mean, if you were to ask the Chamber, I would feel that they're very in touch with their stakeholders, as does M E D P. There have been several surveys that have gone around, both on a city level and, and, and surveys that we've been sending up to chain to Regional Solutions with Jody and the Governor's Office to assess the full impact of this on our community. We don't have the results from that data yet. But what businesses need, you know, is, I think they're going to tell you they need capital.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you so much for answering my questions and for coming tonight. This is definitely one of the critical issues that we need to look at, and we appreciate the additional insight that you've offered. Thank you.
Sal, it looks like you have a question.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Jeff, I think a great presentation as always. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to clarify that there's no desire or intent, and it sounds like not really any funds for Visit McMinville to be part of the, part of some program to provide grants to help support restaurants or other businesses that need financial support right now, is the first question. And the second question is, what, what is the balance on your funding right now? I imagine, it sounds like you're trying to keep some things going, but I know that you pulled back quite a bit on advertising in light of what's happened, so.
Yeah, what is our current financial situation? So we have, as of April first, we had ninety-five thousand dollars. We run a burn rate of about twenty-seven thousand dollars a month just to, you know, for staff and business and G N A and things that we're committed to. And then beyond that, we have a seventy-five thousand dollar reserve line, which we hold as per contract with the city that could be tapped in times of like this by law. And, or it's to, it's basically cover three months of income should the city decide to dissolve our organization. Three, three, three months of bills, I should say.
And, and, and if you were to spend that down, you're not optimistic right now, given what's happened, obviously, of replenishing that with strategic reserve because there's no commerce happening, correct?
Yeah, we've got a, I mean, we have a very detailed budget that I'm actually going to present to my board tomorrow that I'd be happy to share with you, forecasting cash flow through the next eighteen months. So as far as a pool of money that we would issue grants, we, it's not.
Just not there.
It's just not there. And it, we really feel that our best, the biggest impact that we're going to have is to be, that you have an organization that as, once this turns on, we can flip a very targeted campaign to move the needle to get people back. We just, we don't sit on, you know, we spend our money. That's, that's.
Well, it might be, it might be worthwhile, as you mentioned in your, in your talk, to consider not, you know, zeroing out the budget and, and leaving more in a strategic reserve. Cause I do think that's why the Washington Visitors Association was able to do it. They'd maintained a strategic balance or built up a balance over time.
Yeah, the, the Washington County, I spoke with that CEO a few times about that, because I, I was curious how she did that. And, I mean, the first thing that's evident is it's completely in a gray area and I, and the, the industry is not happy about, like, from a legal standpoint. That being said, the woman that runs that organization has a history of working in areas of the country that are ravaged by hurricane. So, you know, they're also a destination with fifty-six hotels and a budget that's like, I don't know, five million dollars. So we're, we're not really comparative to them, but the lesson of potentially, if legally, you know, applicable, that T L T could be used that way, I, I think it's definitely worth it. It, it should definitely be a conversation that we have. Thank you.
Remy, did you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, I was wondering what austerity measures you were taking as an organization?
I'm really sorry, but I'm going to sound really ridiculous, but austerity in, in what sense?
So, uh, what, what small things have you, I mean, where have you chosen to find ways to start immediately cutting some of your expenditures?
We've done quite a few things. So we, the majority of our spending is, is discretionary. That being said, we plan to spend it in chunks, right? So we've cut off all, we, we pushed pause on our Seattle media, excuse me, buy, which is fairly expensive. We've cut our group sales and destination development contract employee, who's no longer, you know, our services are not needed at this time. We've cut our media buying agency that we work with and are no longer using their services. We're still focused on PR because PR is really important and keeping that message of whatever it is out there is a, a critical lifeline we can leverage to get McMinville messaging out. And then we've taken, the only marketing that we are doing right now is any paid and it's a very, it's a small amount is with local, with Oregon Wine Press Local for locally messaging. Our two local billboards that we're in contract with, but we're switching those messages to be more of a support messaging. And then we're really just focused on social media and email communication with, and we even did actually a, a letter writing campaign. It's all local focused. So austerity-wise, we've cut back. We're not spending, we're on a, our time is what we're using right now for, for marketing. So we have marketing employees that we're using, but we're not spending anything on advertisement.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff, for your presentation and for your thoughtfulness. I know you have a board meeting tomorrow where a lot of these same ideas are going to be shared with the board and, and Jeff and Kelly are part of that. And I, I tend to make all the meetings also. So I look forward to having a good, a good, robust discussion. And also wanted to recognize that Erin, the board chair for Visit McMinville is with us tonight. So again, thank you. That now takes us to our presentations and informational items. We're going to do something just a little differently this evening. I've had a number of you call and just say, you know, how involved are the mayor and how involved is the, the council president involved in the goings-on right now? And what is the city doing? We, you know, most of you have jobs. And so I wanted to start out and just have Jeff Towery kind of summarize a little bit of the many, many things that we are doing. You know, we're working from home, but we're very engaged and we're having good dialogue. So Jeff, if you'd start us out with the city manager report, then we'll move to committee reports and board assignments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I've got a few things to run through today. Couple of things will be kind of reminders for you, a couple of, of kind of new breaking issues that you probably don't know about and, and some updates on some things that we've tried to get out in the community. Just a reminder that about a third of our workforce, eighty people are working from home right now. Some are in their fifth week. We've got about a hundred public safety and other field personnel working their regular jobs and practicing social distancing while they're in the office in the field. And then the remainder of our employees are working in closed buildings, practicing social distancing, wearing P P P when appropriate. And in some cases, we're working either staggered cruise or shifts just to make sure we create the distance that, that we need to have. A couple of new things that have been in the works for a couple of weeks, we've been exploring a shelter partnership with the County Y C A P and Newbury. I want to thank Council Drapkin. She's been acting as a convener and a motivator over the last couple of weeks as we've been working through some ideas about how to do a better job of providing shelter to people without homes in our communities. We, I think we've landed on an expanded hotel voucher program that would provide an additional twenty to thirty beds for a window of time of two, three months with the County Y C A P Newburg. We've got a conceptual agreement on a cost share. McMinville's share of that would be twenty thousand dollars, which I would propose using from the set aside that the council established in this year's budget for affordable housing and the impacts of people without homes. We're also pursuing small city and private sector support. So we're not quite, quite ready to launch yet, but it feels like we're moving in the right direction on that program. There was a little bit of conversation earlier about a business support program. We've been working with the other Stable Table partners, seeking grant resources to really focus on two areas. One is a short-term support program. And, and second is resiliency during recovery. We've, we've pursued a couple of different grants that haven't panned out for a variety of reasons. We've still got one in the works in particular. And we're going to continue to work with those granting agencies and with our other Stable Table partners. We'll hope to be able to report something more substantial relatively soon. And then finally, a citywide initiative that I'd like us to pursue is that, you know, food needs are becoming more and more critical in this community for a lot of folks, not just those who are without shelter, but folks who are without work right now. I'd like to be able to work with Y C A P to provide about a ten thousand dollar fund to Y C A P to support all of the active meal services in McMinville. That would impact both our meal sites and, we have four meal sites and four food pantries in the community. The impact of that ten thousand dollars would be about eight hundred food boxes to the four pantries and about a fifty-four percent increase in buying power for the four meal sites over their last year's budget. And again, I'd like to use some of that funding that the council set aside for affordable housing and the impacts of homelessness to pursue that project as well. Let me talk a little bit about some of the department-specific. These aren't in order of priority or preference. They're just the order in which they got pasted into my document. Library, you know about the home delivery of library materials. We launched that on April first. As of yesterday, we had done three hundred and thirty-one deliveries and we had seventy-two more that were set for today. We're real-time answering Patreon questions for, for reference and, and other, other programs by phone and email. We're really pushing downloadable audio, ebook, streaming video resources. We've been working hard to get Spanish language and English language information out through social media about a variety of our library resources. In fire and ambulance, we talked a couple of weeks ago about how we, we transitioned our Monday through Friday peak, peak unit to a twenty-four-hour ambulance to deal with the increased time it was taking to decontaminate our facilities. We've seen a reduction in calls and, and so we have, we have gone back to just four twenty-four-hour ambulances. So we don't have that peak ambulance hour. We're going to continue to monitor to the end of the month. We'll revert to normal staffing if we continue on the trajectory that we are right now. We're doing some things in the fire stations to make changes. We're doing full shift meals and trainings in our main training room where there's room to accommodate social distancing. We did receive just over fifty-one thousand dollars from the CARES Act Provider Relief Fund. It's being used to offset revenue options, our revenue losses from decreased call volume. It's a one-time payment that we've already received. Our P P E numbers are holding steady right now. Um, our PPE numbers are holding steady right now. Uh, we've got a couple of orders in and, uh, right now we're able to provide the supplies we need to, to keep our employees safe. Uh, we've also done a full contamination of the fire station, the house on Baker Creek Road, all of our ambulances and all of our frontline engines. Uh, we'll continue to decontaminate vehicles on a weekly basis. Planning is, um, operating, uh, building and planning services, uh, full service through, um, uh, e-permitting and electronic plan review. We're still processing and working on future plans. Folks are still pulling permits. Um, code compliance has changed things up a little bit. Um, you've heard about the prescription delivery program that just launched a week ago. We've already done, uh, 13 prescriptions, um, uh, filled and delivered. We get about two calls a day on that. Uh, we're also working on some partnerships to utilize the compliance, um, uh, team to help deliver food pantry boxes. In the police department, um, uh, we've, we've continued to work on social distancing and limiting non-essential travel. Uh, we have done some birthday party, uh, parade drive-bys for younger kids who can't celebrate their birthday parties. We've done about 10 of those. It's a fun experience for our officers. Um, a number of our staff have been working with elementary schools to do virtual storytimes. Uh, an employee makes a three to five-minute video of themselves reading to children. Uh, the school then posts those, um, uh, reading sessions usually on a Facebook feed. Uh, we've also been working with the school district to remind, uh, children about social distancing when, uh, the, the buses are delivering meals, uh, during the day, uh, at their respective bus stops. Uh, human resources, um, Kylie has, uh, been working on a number of, uh, policies to get us through this time. Uh, we've also extended our, uh, employee assistance program to include all of our part-time, temporary and seasonal employees. Um, you do know that we, um, we worked, uh, through a, a layoff of our, uh, part-time parks and rec folks, uh, last week. Uh, we put together a comprehensive, um, fact sheet with information available on workout opportunities in the community and to help people navigate unemployment claims. And we're responding to all claims for unemployment, uh, in three days or less to make sure that our, um, former employees are able to access funds quickly. Finance has been really operating at a distance. We're ma, we're making all of our payroll and accounts payable according to our normal schedules. Uh, we're also, uh, using the finance team to provide support for grant award and our federal programs, uh, coming out of the COVID-19 response, particularly the, the work that we, uh, will do to perhaps get some partial reimbursement from FEMA for some of the costs that we're incurring. In community development, uh, wastewater services is a participating in a Harvard-based study, uh, to test treatment plant influence, uh, for signs of the COVID-19 virus. We've sent out samples and are waiting test results for our first two submitted samples. Our public works crews are among those working on staggered shift assignments, which reduces the number of staff on duty, but it also, uh, reduces the amount of potential exposures among the crews and we're getting the work done. Um, one of the things that our folks in the Community Development Center did, because it's closed to the public, is, uh, we're, um, repurposing an old library book drop into a secure construction bid submission receptacle so that when we do have projects, folks can, can drop off their bids and we'll be doing public bid openings outdoors in the parking lot. Um, Parks and Rec has launched the MAC2U program. Uh, we've got videos, activities, uh, surveys and more that, uh, folks can access online and through social media. We're having dance and gymnastics videos done by our own instructors, sports drills, meet the staff, uh, downloadable activities like, uh, games, um, uh, scavenger hunts, mad libs, that sort of thing. We called about 400 of our senior, uh, active, active seniors and volunteers just to check in with them, let them know that we're thinking about, at them, find out if they're doing okay. Uh, we've delivered about 150 activity packs to seniors that include crossword trivia and some chocolate. Uh, we'll be doing a mailing next week, uh, to do a, a more broad announcement of MAC2U. We've also started a scholarship fund for kids and families that are particularly hard hit, uh, so that they can get back into recreation once our programs start up. And we're starting the park ranger season a little early this year to really focus on social distancing education and to remind folks, uh, what they can and can't do in the parks, playgrounds, um, skate parks and, uh, sports courts. It was a lot in a short period of time. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but thank you for the time to do that. And, and again, I want to thank the employees of this organization who are doing really tremendous work in the community right now.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions from counselors for Jeff?
Thanks, uh, Mayor. I do have one question, which is, um, kind of an unhappy one. Uh, I, I do appreciate all of the work that the staff has done to keep the city, um, moving forward and certainly a lot has happened in terms of, um, trying to meet, uh, uh, increased need. Um, and I'm aware of us having worked through the, the layoffs of, um, temporary staff through, through last week. I noticed that the city of Portland has already started, um, making changes to their city's budgeting in terms of staffing in anticipation of significant drop in receipts as a result of COVID-19. Um, I assume that that's happening as part of each department's budgeting that's coming forward now, but I'm wondering if there's been any, any thought to alternatives to further layoffs. You know, we've, we've had conversations in the past about allowing staff to reduce hours as an offset to increasing their COLA or furlough days for non-unit employees as alternatives to additional layoffs. And I just, I guess I'll just throw out that if we have to take further steps, I would hope that we will look to furlough days and other kinds of, of reductions that are not necessarily layoffs or, or staffing level reductions.
We've had some early conversations about those things. They'll be, that'll be part of the conversation around the, the budget process this year. Uh, right now, um, based on where we think we will end the year and how we think we will start the year, we believe we've got some time to work through those issues and really take a look at, uh, what our status is mid-year after the property tax revenues come in. Uh, so we, we expect to do a pretty heavy lift on that and we'll do a lot more planning and evaluation for those kinds of programs over the next couple of months. Uh, we'll also rely pretty substantially on the core services work that's anticipated in the strategic plan to help inform any decisions that we have to make.
Thanks, Jeff.
Any other questions for Jeff? Uh, Adam?
Jeff, you mentioned a grant, uh, that you're still working on. Could you elaborate on any timeline that you have on that?
We are, um, we are particularly interested right now in the possibility of an Oregon Community Foundation grant. Uh, one of the questions that we, uh, need to have answered is the, the city's not actually eligible for this particular grant program. We think there's a possibility that the McMinnville Downtown Association is a qualifying recipient and we're just waiting for, uh, confirmation of whether that's the case. Um, Heather Richards has been the staff lead on that. Um, she might be able to talk in a little bit more detail about, um, the timing on that.
Yeah, just to follow up, we did, um, receive an email this, so everything's moving fast and furiously and these programs are developing and changing and evolving daily. Um, we did receive an email from Oregon Community Foundation. In fact, I haven't told Dave reckless this yet, so, hello tonight, um, that they would cons, they might consider the McMinnville Downtown Association the Economic Improvement District and have encouraged us to apply for the funds. These funds are only distributed to community development financial institutions and economic improvement district, city and county economic improvement districts. So we had to, um, find a path forward for them. Um, we've also been in discussion with Craft Three, who is a community development financial institution about working on a program with them as well. We had a conference call this afternoon. So Oregon Community Foundation has about $14 million in this particular small business stabilization fund, which is a response fund for the COVID event for small businesses in, in Oregon. So we're, we're, our fingers crossed that this is a successful program for us to get involved with.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Kelly?
Not a question, just a reminder to everyone, you might want to dust off your, uh, last year's budget and take a look at it because, uh, you will be looking at a new one soon and it might be a good idea to kind of look at what happened last year.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I, I, I would just like to take a, a couple of minutes and share some of the things that I've been involved in and then we'll go around and do our report. I have, uh, availed myself to become very involved at the state, regional, uh, county and, uh, levels in communicating and listening, how we can be partners with those, um, uh, that are going through this pandemic, uh, phase. Uh, had an opportunity to electronically attend the governor's, uh, meeting today and her, uh, partnering with Washington and California and her direction. Uh, we meet with the League of Oregon Cities on a weekly basis, uh, on a conference call, getting good information. Mike Colley has done an excellent job from that perspective and I shared that with, with Patty. Uh, we're meeting, uh, on a county level and doing a Zoom meeting that is being livestreamed to MCM and Jerry's helping us and Phil is helping us there. Um, again, we have a number of state senators and representatives on that call along with the chamber and city managers as we're trying to put out good information and building those types of things. Um, you know, very involved with Water and Light as we're, uh, very cautious about, um, uh, not turning off any services of utilities. We're going to be talking in the consent agenda about, uh, our customers helping customer program in the city and Water and Light. And if everything comes together, we'll have about $75,000, uh, available to help those that are struggling with utilities. Uh, again, a lot of, uh, a lot of meetings, a lot of just being a part of what's going on out there. I did want to give you the latest, uh, statistics from, um, the Oregon Health Agency this morning. Yamhill County continues with a total of six deaths. Uh, four of those have been in Newburgh and the other two, um, in other communities. And talking to Jeff, we're not aware of any deaths in McMinnville at this point. Uh, we have 814 individuals that have been tested with 32 that are positive. That's about a 3.75 percentage rate. We've been at that level for the last two weeks as I track that on a, on a, a daily basis. The state at this particular time, we see 55 deaths. We've had about 33, 32,000, uh, tests being, uh, accomplished with 1633 that are positive. That's running at about 5%. Uh, today in the governor's, um, uh, press conference, they're talking about ramping that up significantly, the testing, and the intent is to be doing 15,000 tests, uh, or excuse me, 1,500 tests, uh, uh, a week moving forward. And so that's going to be a significant increase as we're going through that process. But I do want you to know that, uh, you know, Jeff and Kelly and I meet at least once a week. Jeff and I seem to be on the phone at least on a, a daily basis as we're trying to coordinate. And again, our biggest concern right now is how we can utilize the recovery piece. And if we're using dollars, we want to use it and with grants that give us more, what I would call buying power to help people in their time of need. So that would be my short, that would be my report. Uh, so let's just go ahead and go around and see if anyone would like to report anything that they would have from a committee or a board assignment. And I'll just start at the top. Uh, Kelly, any report?
Uh, Visit McMinnville tomorrow and the League of Oregon Cities on Friday. I don't really have a lot to report now.
Okay. Could you update us a little bit on the soup, the soup kitchen with your involvement there?
Um, we actually are closed for two weeks. Uh, last week was the first week and this will be the second. Uh, they, they were down to four volunteers and Robin just got very upset about things and so she closed things down, but they will start next Monday. And, uh, they were serving around 80 meals when they stopped. Uh, we did have one gentleman, uh, who was a cook who became ill. We don't know that he had COVID-19. I don't think that he probably did, but, uh, she just, it kind of scared her. So she just shut everything down for a little bit. But she's been working this week and cooking and doing stuff, so it'll be easier to get out meals fast next week. Fortunately, we've had like three churches step up and take a couple of days so that they can serve meals in the interim, but we'll be back again, like I say, next Monday.
Correct. Yeah, the co-op, the Baptist Church, Presbyterian Church, uh, over this two-week period have stepped up and, uh, co-op is using their building to give out the food, uh, boxes and the Presbyterian and Baptist Church is using the library's parking lot.
Yeah, it's kind of a joint, a group, uh, collection point.
Yeah. And then just a, a little update on the, uh, Yamhill Rescue Mission. Uh, during the colder weather, a week and a half ago, they were having approximately 50, uh, individuals spending the emergency nights since it was under freezing. Uh, with the hotter weather, they're now down to about 25. So people with the warmer weather are starting to move and, and the, the rescue mission has done some real fundraising because they've been at full capacity and, uh, not having much volunteers. Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Zach? Any report?
There we go. Thank you. Um, couple updates on my things and then a question, process question. Um, HLC, so strike landmarks, no, uh, applications, so no meetings. Um, if anything pops up at the end of this month, they'll schedule something, but, uh, currently there's nothing. Uh, landscape review, that's meeting tomorrow and a peek at the agenda, um, indicates that woo-hoo, we're getting a Chipotle, whoa, whoa. Um, KOB Technical Advisory Committee, uh, joint, which is hopefully working towards a joint school board, city council meeting, uh, seems to be ba, rightly so, backburnered while we navigate COVID challenges. So, um, hopefully in the future we'll be able to convene, um, to address some of those issues once, uh, some of those more pressing matters have popped up. The MAC PAC, the, um, committee convened to talk about park recreation, for sort of that facilities, what we do at the Pool Aquatic Center was, uh, we've missed one meeting for COVID and we're coming up on the second. We're looking to get together to talk about, uh, digitally to talk about how we go forward. It's kind of an 18-month process that we were just getting started. So, um, it's a conversation about how to, how and, how do people want to keep going and, um, not lose our momentum. Um, the other one that I wanted to kind of bring up to keep in the conversation was that, uh, climate initiative. I know all those students are now, um, transitioning a lot, uh, but, uh, the climate still remains an issue. And so I know the mayor and Claudia have been working to get on, um, Ms. Searing's radar for, uh, to represent her group and bring that back together. So I'm looking forward to hopefully that coming back up. And then my main process question, um, and maybe a discussion was the, our Level 10 meetings had some, liked that format and had some steam and we had got to the point of a pro, in the process where we identified that sort of most pressing issue, which I recall was the fire and EMS staffing discussion. And it doesn't seem to have come back. Um, and I know that the, believe that this, I believe that the SAFER grant, um, application window maybe has opened and so it seems that, my question is with that Level 10 meeting, when are we going to bring those items, uh, back up to our council discussion? And if, and if that SAFER grant is open, when will we have that discussion or if that's something we should pursue? And I know there's many moving parts with that, but it, so it seems like, uh, carving out time to have that discussion, especially if that was our Level 10 top priority, given that grant window's open, um, be a worthwhile discussion and time to set aside before that closes. So maybe I can get a staff for council.
Let's, let's have Jeff, uh, address the, um, the grant and then when Wendy makes her report, she can update us on the Level 10.
Perfect. That was, that was what I was in, I hope, hoping would happen. So the, the SAFER grant, um, rules did come out last week. Uh, we think we got the right copy, but all the dates are last year's dates, including the title of the regs. So it's a little unclear whether we have the, the real one or not. Um, we're in the process of evaluating that. The, the window is open for about another month or so. Uh, the chief and I talked last week. Our plan is to have a recommendation, um, to you at your next council meeting to talk through. Uh, in addition, the consultant study on the, uh, district assessment is still continuing and we're looking to have, um, data to you again, at least some preliminary data probably at your next council meeting. So, um, that consultant work is continuing and, and, uh, we may, you know, we've, we've, uh, we've probably slipped a little bit just in terms of the time it takes to do work under the realities of COVID-19, but we're still bringing back some, uh, step one information to you, um, yet this spring.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll, I'll just continue to go down the line, uh, Sal and Wendy, uh, Sal first and Wendy and then Adam and then Remy.
All right. Mind if I jump in and ask a que, question? Just I heard that right. Your next, our next meeting, we should be having that discussion on the grant. That's your, you're in the chief's goal?
Yeah, we'll at least. Yeah, we'll at least have a preliminary conversation with you. I don't know if we'll be at a decision point or not, but we'll have evaluated the rules and regs, and we'll be able to let you know what the opportunities are for the grant this time around.
Thanks. Okay. Sal?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. The main report is for Council of Governments. As folks may know, one of the main roles of the Council of Governments is to originate loans, mostly small business loans. It's been kind of a declining function of the COG for many years. However, with the emergency that has happened with COVID-19, that service has come into significantly high demand. So in the next, in this quarter, they're expecting to generate triple the revenues from loans than they had budgeted for the entire year. And that's based as a processor for the Small Business Association. And the reason I mention it now is that several cities, including Newburgh, have approached the Council of Governments to help with loans for gap funding as a result of COVID-19. So I mentioned it for Jeff and for Heather, that if we do run into cash flow issues, I would encourage you to reach out to the COG. The second main issue we discussed today was that the Council of Governments is the main entity that is the host for the new continuum of care, that is the Mid-Willemette Valley Continuum of Care. So in addition to Marion and Pope Counties, the Grand Ron Tribe has also joined into that rural continuum. So we're the only Mid-Willemette Valley jurisdiction, Yamhill County, that didn't sign on to that Mid-Willemette Continuum of Care to help address the homelessness situation. But that is going forward in the other counties, and the COG's playing a central role in that. So that's my...
Thank you, Sal. Let's move over to Wendy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. MIRAC did not have a meeting this month. We anticipate having a meeting the first Wednesday of May, so I probably will have a report after that meeting. And to answer Zach's question with regards to Level 10 meeting, we had determined, since we're newer to the Level 10 meeting, and we're just getting used to the Zoom format, that it would be better for us to either wait until we reconvene, or wait until we're more familiar and comfortable with the Zoom format before we continue with the Level 10 meetings. That we're still, Scott, Kelly and I are still meeting for Level 10 meetings to discuss certain things. So we're practicing and planning for when we initiate the process again. And what will happen with that issue that we voted on is we will send it out again with what the votes were, and just reconfirm, when we have our first Level 10 meeting again, reconfirm that that's a topic that we still would like to discuss, to make sure it's not outdated at that time, or there's not a topic that's a higher priority for our IDS for that session. So I would say that we might look at it in May, if we feel comfortable doing it over Zoom. Since we're newer to the process, we didn't want to add that to also a new software, learn to use a new software. So does that answer your question, Zach?
Yeah. I'm, yeah, I was excited to give it a go and dig into it, and I appreciate the concerns about jumping, adding that as a layer of complexity. I'd hate to lose our momentum and start over, but I guess such is the reality of where we're at. So if that answered my question, thanks.
We might look at, we've only missed April, right? Or did we? We might look at doing it in March, if we're still on Zoom and we want to...
That would be backwards, Mark, so...
Should we do it on March 59th? April 75th, let's go for that as our target date. And let's do one on February 30th, too.
Thank you, Wendy. Let's move over to Adam.
Airport Commission, we are going to meet for our Commercial Standards Committee, was going to start this month in April, but given what's going on, we decided to postpone that. YCOM was going to have our first budget meeting. We also decided to postpone that and hopefully handle all the budget stuff in our May meeting. On the Level 10 stuff that was brought up, I think this Zoom meeting's gone very well, and I would be up for sure bringing it back in May. And I even wouldn't be opposed to bringing it back at our next meeting, since it's supposed to be the second meeting of the month. Safer Grant stuff, I would like to see a proposal in front of us, our recommendation, to be at a decision-making point in two weeks, given that it's typically a 30-day window. And so that would still only leave a little over two weeks to write that grant. And if we didn't get to that decision-making point until the first meeting in May, that would only give a couple of days to write that grant. So I would like it to be put in front of us at the next meeting, from a personal standpoint. As far as staffing levels of that Safer Grant, I'll leave that up to the chief and Jeff, and your guys' expertise as the organization. But from a policy standpoint, I would like to see it brought in front of us. The other thing, other two things why I have the floor is small business assistance. If that grant falls through that you guys are working through with the NDA, I would like to see us as a city put something together. We talk about how much Third Street is our living room, and it's our main thoroughfare, and all that that brings. And throughout this crisis, we as a city haven't really acted on that. And so I would like the rubber to meet the road and put something together in that standpoint. And the third thing is what I've reached out to Mayor Hill about, and Jeff a little bit, and that's to give grocers the flexibility to not utilize the bag ban right now and have a press release come out from us as a council, or the mayor's office, and just say why we're in a state of emergency. We're not going to enforce that. And if a grocer on their own wants to ban the use of reusable bags within their store to protect their staff, they're open to doing that. We're not coming out and saying they have to ban the use of them, but we're giving that grocer the option without having to fear repercussions. And some grocers have already done that and just said, well, if I get fined, I get fined. But I think we as a city should do that from a public health standpoint. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Adam. And Remy?
Thank you. So starting with the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force from the Planning Department, just to let everybody know, Community Home Builders has still been working closely with the Planning Department, and been applying for and having permits issued for their subdivision. And actually, Planning has issued six certificates of occupancy and six new building permits in the past two weeks, which also means that they've been recording certificates of exemption for all the fees exempted on the homes. And so also, that means that to date, the Planning Department, or the city of McMinnville, however you want to phrase it, has provided $236,861.90 in development fee incentives for affordable housing since July 1st, 2017. So that's going on. Of course, we're not, also not having our meetings as usual, but there are a lot of other meetings happening. I am also attending League of Oregon Cities meetings, and then I've been working on a number of different initiatives. I, let's see, as I look around the room, I tried to, there was an effort through Nike and some Nike, some folks that work for Nike, to try to connect government with local businesses that had sewing machines and 3D printers to start producing PPEs. This is a couple of weeks ago, so, you know, as all things COVID, some things become less relevant day in and day out. So that's happening now, not because of anything I did, but that effort, the large-scale effort has succeeded to start having different manufacturers produce that. But I was doing that work early on. I was also discussing with city staff, especially our city manager, when we were looking at pre, before any protections came out regarding rental lease assistance, we were in discussions about what the role, what role the city might play as we had, we were hearing evidence of kind of two tones of things happening in commercial leases. Largely, we were hearing the stories of people being very supportive and helping with, helping their commercial renters to figure out what was going forward. But we also did hear some stories of very predatory practices that started coming out of this situation. Sorry, I'm looking over at my lists here. What else? Oh, I should tell you that, so First Baptist Church, which was providing overnight housing for some people without homes, ultimately decided that they needed to stop those operations because of multiple things, including that they just didn't have volunteer staff where they felt like they could provide a safe environment to do that. Unfortunately, that happened before some of the last freezing nights that we had. As Jeff mentioned, we have been working, we have a work group that is convened, sometimes biweekly, weekly, biweekly, depending on the need and the demand, where we are putting together and have been working on plans for our unhoused citizens, especially as related to COVID-19. And that's been a city, county, and beyond effort. And I really thank everybody that's participated in that, especially YCAP and our city staff and our county, who have been very committed to coming up not only with a plan, but a great plan. And it's been very thoughtful, and it's been a great group to be working within. I've also been trying to support YCAP and other organizations through being a conduit of information. So whether that's information up to county or state level, or if that's information out to business leaders, and that's been my effort, is to try to connect local businesses and find ways that they might be able to participate with needs that are coming and dollars that are being funded through different efforts. So been attempting to support the food bank. I'll reiterate again what Jeff said, we have a real demand for food. He was talking about the potential city contribution. The food bank currently is planning on needing 2,000 to-go food boxes per week. And they don't have enough food, they don't have enough boxes. And of course, their volunteer staff has been discharged, because, largely discharged, because their volunteer staff is mostly a high-risk population. So we have a great amount of need for our food banks. We've been trying to connect them with local businesses, and connect local businesses with funding that's becoming available. What else? Shelter program. And then, and then I've been having conversations with nonprofits and other business owners. I've talked to a lot of business owners about the PPP loans and trying to take the temperature of where they are, what's important to them, and continue to move that information where it needs to go. I was able to sit in a small group meeting with Representative Bonamichi a couple of days ago, as well as other city and county leaders. And I did share at that time, and I'll share with this group as well, that we are already experiencing in McMinnville, the inequitable distribution of those loans based on, you know, historic access to the banking system. And so I did, I was sure to let the Congresswoman know about the struggles that especially minorities are facing in accessing those loans, and how impactful that will be for a community such as ours, that is, you know, 30% Latinx and, and beyond, that there's just a lot of struggle for accessing those loans for not just minority-owned businesses, but minority-run nonprofits who are also eligible for those loans. And then I'm just trying to save the world. You can sign up to donate blood with the American Red Cross. April 16th is currently full, May 2nd still has room. The American Red Cross really needs your blood donations right now. And I told them I'd try to help get that messaging out, so it seems like a good platform. And be sure to go out and get some sunshine and take care of yourselves.
Thank you, Remy. And thank you for your reports. I'll just open it up for any department heads that would like to update the council on things that are happening within their department. Jeff did a good job. Jeff, I see you have a question.
So just a couple of follow-ups, just to confirm, the Safer Grant window of application closes on May 15th, so we will have something back to you, either at the second meeting in April or that first meeting in May. And then as a follow-up to Heather's report, if we are able to move forward on an OCF grant application, there will likely be a local match required. And if not required, it would make a stronger application, and we may have to move fairly quickly on that. So I just, I don't want you to be surprised if we come back and tap you for some sort of a match for that business assistance program.
Thank you, Jeff. So Zach? Did I see your hand wave?
Yes. There you go. Follow-up to Jeff's two items, you had asked about some money for two different programs. Is that something that we need to give you direction on, or are you marching forward with that?
I saw lots of head nodding, so I'm going to take that as your consensus to march forward on those two items.
Cool. I would agree, but I don't watch all the bouncing heads. The other one would be, I'd like to, thank you for that timeline update for the Safer Grant, and then I'd like to double down on Adam's desire to see some decision-ish document in front of us sooner rather than later. That's an impactful, long discussion, decision item, and the longer we can have to decide on that and give you direction and make use of that open window, seems the best. Pushing that towards the end seems like sliding more towards a default no or non-submital. So I'd like to double down on Adam's, and I hope anyone else feels strongly, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Zach. So Kylie, I saw that you're on screen now. Did you have an update? Nope. Susan? Jennifer? Nope. And I know there's some others. We've got the fire department. Nope, they dropped off. So let's now get into the agenda. We have a consent agenda this evening, and we have two items on that consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A quick follow-up from the fire department?
Oh, okay.
Just to touch base, apologize, I'm here at the, I'm here at the center here.
Oh, I see you.
If you will, in the next couple of weeks, see some advertisement coming out from Lifelight. We have created, joined a partnership with Lifelight on our Fire Med program. They're taking over the management of the program and the advertising and the marketing of the program, and taking all of the administrative work off of us. So that, you will see flyers coming out if you're a Fire Med program. You will have options to also join Lifelight's program. As far as some of the other items that we're working on, I don't want to get too long, but I do want to touch base on the Safer Grant. We do have a gentleman who has helped us with our GEMT funding grants, and he is on the hook as a grant writer to help us through the Safer Grant in the event that we move through that direction. So we'll have a professional grant writer helping with us if we move in that direction and get that thing through.
Any questions for the chief? Thanks, chief. Okay. Our consent agenda tonight, go ahead.
Chief, on the Lifelight partnership, is there like a combo rate coming out, or they're just... they're just kind of absorbing Fire Med and you still need to buy memberships independently if you're a citizen that has Fire Med and opt into Lifelight, it's going to be additional costs?
There'll, there'll, there will be a combo rate, a single rate or a combo rate. You can do either one, you can do either one or both at a rate.
Works with or?
I haven't asked him.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question for Jennifer since she's on. If she knows.
So we, we, I think we will probably come pretty close to the $500,000 that we budgeted on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will then move forward with the, the rest of our, our meeting. Our consent agenda this evening authorizes the city manager to sign the airport property lease agreement within Holland Farms and the Customer Helping Customer Program. Is there any counselor that would like to take either item off of our consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I would like to move the consent agenda as presented.
In a second.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Sal and seconded by Kelly, all in favor of the consent agenda. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The consent agenda passes unanimously six to zero this evening. That will take us to our resolutions. Our first resolution is Resolution 2020-20, a resolution to award a contract for the McMinnville Municipal Airport Jet A Fuel System, Project Number 2019-8 to Mascot Equipment. And we've got Mike on, on the line to run us through that presentation. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll apologize for the video, I'm coming to you from the Jeep since the janitors descended on the community development center. So this resolution that's before you this evening is related to the placement of a new Jet A fueling system at the McMinnville Municipal Airport. We received two bids for that work. The lowest responsible and responsive bidder is Mascot Equipment in an amount of $229,850. Counselor, we call that that's the same contractor that replaced the 100 low lead tank for us a year ago. So funds for this will be included in both the fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21 budgets for the airport fund. And you'll see when the budget comes out, we'll pay part of this through a wastewater capital loan from Wastewater Capital in fiscal year 21 that we'll pay back over a five-year period. So unless there's any questions, I'd recommend the council approve the resolution as presented.
Any questions for Mike?
Just one clarifying question, Mike. The, there's not going to be any downtime on Jet A because that old tank's still serviceable, correct?
That's correct. The existing tank's in service and will remain in service, knock on wood, through the term of this contract. We expect this tank to be in place by September, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then I'll motion to approve Resolution 2020-20.
Amen.
For second.
It has been moved by Adam and seconded by Kelly, all in favor of the consent agenda by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-20 passes unanimously six to zero. That moves us to our next resolution, 2020-21, a resolution to award a contract for the 2020 Spring Street Repair, Project Number 2020-1 to K&amp;E Paving Incorporated, DBA H&amp;H Paving. Mike, if you could run over that with us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet from Engineering Services Manager Larry Sherwood, as well as the proposed resolution awarding this contract. This contract is actually for pavement repairs along Linfield Avenue and along Second Street. I know the brief article that was in the paper alluded to this being on Spring Street, which the word spring in the title denotes the time of year that the work will be done, not the street that it's going to be done on. So we received three bids for this work. The most responsive and responsible bidder, lowest responsive and responsible bidder is K&amp;E Paving, doing business as H&amp;H Paving. They've done a number of these types of projects for us in the past. And so unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Any questions for Mike? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-21. So who was that?
Remy.
Second.
Okay, so I'm going to put Remy moved and Zach seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-21 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to our next resolution, which is 2020-22, a resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from Wastewater Capital Fund to the General Fund and consider Resolution 2020-23, a resolution making a budgetary transfer of resources and appropriation authority for the fiscal year 2019-2020 in the Wastewater Capital Fund and General Fund budgets. And so we'll call on Jennifer to update us and present this to us. Jennifer?
Okay, great. And just to get back to Adam's question, I just quickly double-checked, and we are still projecting that new franchise fee from Wastewater to come in right over half a million.
Thank you.
So in terms of what we're doing here, there are two resolutions associated with this action. The first is you all authorizing internal borrowing from the Wastewater Capital Fund to the General Fund. And what this will be purchasing is there was equipment in the Emergency Operations Center, which is in the police department, which in, I just want to say, just in the last month, up and died. And this equipment is original to the building, so it's over 10 years old, and they just can't repair it anymore. So there's funds for that. And it also, so that's a new item. And the loan will also this year cover three vehicles that were, were in the budget for the police department that we had originally looked at doing a commercial lease for, but it's a less expensive prospect for us to do this through an internal borrowing, both for the General Fund. And then Wastewater Capital earns a small premium on what the Oregon State Pool funds earn them, so it's, it's a win-win for both departments. So the, the second resolution in the package does the actual budget transfers that we need to do to be able to execute on this internal borrowing. And then I have added, we've added a third component to this, to this package in the second resolution, which is to essentially transfer funds that we would have otherwise budgeted next year in fiscal 2021, so that parks can utilize it in the current fiscal year to do some basic maintenance projects and things like that across several of their facilities that are closed right now, in the hopes that we can avoid closures later in the summer. So it's effectively moving money for, from a timing perspective. So that's the nuts and bolts of what's before you in these two related resolutions. Any questions or more detail I can share?
Adam?
So the three pursuit vehicles were originally going to be leases, and now we're purchasing them outright, is that?
We're going to be doing an internal borrowing, so we'll be paying a five-year payback to the Wastewater Capital Fund as opposed to a five-year lease with a commercial agency.
And how much of that police department is that piece of equipment that went bad versus the three pursuit vehicles?
Let's see, the, the total for the pursuit vehicles was just under $175,000, all three. And the, the equipment in the Emergency Operations Center is $62,000.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-22 and Resolution Number 2020-23.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Kelly, seconded by Adam. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolutions 2020-22 and Resolutions 2020-23 pass, passes unanimously six to zero. Our next resolutions for consideration, and again, I think this is a piggyback like we've just gone through, is a resolution authorizing the closure of one fund, the ambulance fund, and authorizing the change of the building fund from a enterprise fund to a special revenue fund and consider Resolution 2020-25, a resolution authorizing a budgetary transfer of resources and appropriation, appropriation authority for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 of the ambulance fund to the general fund, dash fire department. And so Jennifer, if you could update us on this, these two resolutions also.
Okay, yeah, thanks. So again, this is kind of a two-for, two-for related thing. The first resolution focuses on the, the funds themselves. So the most important piece of this is the closure of the ambulance fund, which currently is a standalone enterprise fund, as you all may, may know. And in the next resolution, those funds will be re-appropriated to the fire department within the general fund. So the primary reason why we're doing this is for programmatic purposes. Right now, also as you all are aware, the, the fire operations is an integrated shop. The, the ambulance services and the, and the fire response teams, that they are the same staff, they work together, they, they're fully integrated from an operational perspective. But historically, they've been separated financially. And the reasons back in, historically, for them to be separated made sense at the time. At the time, the ambulance fund was able to sustain itself based on revenues generated primarily for passing on the cost of ambulance rides, right? And so that, that fund has not been sustainable, has not had a, a year where current costs were covered by current revenues for over 15 years at this point. And the general fund, just in the current budget year, was programmed to make a, a transfer of one, over $1.1 million. So I know you all are aware that the general fund has been supporting it significantly over the last, well, over a decade. So because, because it no longer is an enterprise, which is self-sustaining, which is kind of an underlying principle of an enterprise fund, it just, from a financial perspective, also didn't make a whole lot of sense from my perspective. So I fully supported the fire chief when he requested that we take a look at the financial structure of how his operation is, is governed and tracked. So secondarily, in this same resolution, and this is more pushed from, you all will may recall, a month or two ago, I was before you with an action plan because we had gotten an internal control finding on our audit. And part of what's pushing that is the complexity of the handwork involved in producing our financial statements. And so by changing the building fund from an enterprise fund to a special revenue fund, it's still going to be a standalone fund, but the accounting for it is less complicated, and it will, it just, it will be much, it'll be easier for us to, to manage our finances by reducing the number of enterprise funds that we manage together with the governmental funds. So it doesn't change at all, in, in neither case are, will operations change, will operations go away? That's, that's not a feature of what's happening here. So that's, that's the first resolution. Then what the second resolution does is it shifts the, the appropriations that were previously given to the ambulance fund and moves it to the fire department within the general fund. So, and there is no, the, the change that we're making to the building fund, there's no budgetary impact. Their revenues are still their revenues, it's just the fund type that's changing. So would, do folks have any questions about this? Any concerns about the thinking? Okay, yeah?
As far as the ambulance fund going into the fire side of the general fund, are we still going to be able to see when we go through our budget process, kind of what the, the train of the EMS side is versus the, the fire side? I'm seeing a head nod from Jeff.
Yeah, well, it's structured so that previously, the fire department had just a single division, and now it will have two. So it will be very transparent to see, it'll be a one-to-one change. We are moving salaries in the ambulance fund to salaries in the ambulance division of the fire department. So you'll be able to track those numbers one-to-one.
And the ambulance contingency that's going to general fund contingency, that's because there's no fire department contingency fund?
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Hearing none, then I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-24 and Resolution Number 2020-25.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And so we have it moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed by, signifying by saying nay? Resolution Number 2020-24 and Resolution 2020-25 unanimously six to zero. That takes us to our last item this evening, and that is an ordinance. And we want to consider the first reading of Ordinance 5092, adopting new requirements and regulations regarding to campaign financing. And so we will call on City Attorney Walt Gow to present. Walt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you may recall that this topic of discussion was the subject of a work session in February where we discussed the status of campaign finance generally. And, and the, at the conclusion of that, of that session, the council directed that staff prepare and bring back for council consideration, a form of ordinance that emulates the Portland Campaign Finance Disclosure Provisions that were upheld by the Circuit Court of Multnomah County. That's what you have before you in Ordinance Number 5092. Just to summarize it very briefly, it establishes the right of employees to have payroll, payroll deductions made from their salaries for campaign contribution purposes. It requires registration of campaigns, entities, and committees with the Oregon Secretary of State within three days after they've spent $750 on an election cycle for a candidate campaign in McMinnville. It requires timely disclosure of large contributions and expenditures in connection with campaign communications. It, and, and those disclosures must be disclosing within the communication the existence of the most five dominant contributors, politic, to political committees, the most five dominant independent spenders who have supported the campaign communications. And if any of the dominant contributors is a political committee, then that committee has to disclose its top three funders during the campaign. then that committee has to, uh, disclose its top three funders during the current election cycle. Um, the disclosures of, of contributions have to be current within, uh, 10 days of, of, uh, printed material and current to within five days of any, uh, uh, video or audio communications that a, uh, would be, uh, put to the, put out to the public. Um, the ordinance contains, um, implementation and enforcement procedures in Section 050. Uh, it, it essentially creates a financial penalty for, uh, from two to 20 times any illegal expenditure for which proper disclosures were not made. It appoints the City Finance Director to be the point person on receiving and investigating complaints and issuing orders, uh, for compliance and/or, uh, and/or civil penalty orders. Um, it does empower the City Finance Director to issue subpoenas. It allows for appeal to the Circuit Court, uh, by people who are disaffected with those orders. Um, and, um, and it has a section that gives you the definitional provisions that relate to who are dominant contributors, who are independent spenders, what expenditures are encompassed. So, uh, that's a summary of the ordinance. It's identical to the Portland, uh, Campaign Finance provisions that were upheld, uh, in Multnomah County. And, uh, it is before you, you can choose to do a first reading tonight. Uh, you could choose to do a public hearing or you could do both this evening. Uh, since this is a legislative piece and not a quasi-judicial, you can, you can undertake a first reading, uh, before you undertake a public hearing if you so choose. Um, and so that concludes my report and I'm happy to take any questions from the council.
Any questions for Walt?
Yeah, I, just as a point of comment, as I was reading through it and from some other comments I've heard, uh, as much as I appreciate the wording and everything in this, this really only addresses candidate campaigns, it does not address, uh, ballot measures, correct?
You're absolute, you're absolutely correct. That's the only provisions that have been upheld in, uh, Multnomah County at this point. There's been no, no other provisions relating to measures.
So we, we would go ahead.
Right now, measures, right now, measures are, are governed by the two statutes that were adopted by the legislature, um, that we discussed. Uh, so there is, there is Oregon law requiring disclosures relating to measures, but this ordinance really relates only to candidate elections.
Okay, thank you, Walt.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, would the council, uh, like to move, uh, would the council li- like to have the opportunity to schedule a public hearing on this ordinance or ask for a first reading? What would be your pleasure?
I'd go for a first reading.
I, I agree with Kelly. We've, we've heard this. I think this is the third time we've had this before us. So I'd like to just pass it tonight if we could, if the votes are there.
And others are agreeing? Okay, good. Um, so i- if, uh, no one objects, I would like, uh, suggest that we consider the first reading of Ordinance 5092. Um, and does anyone object to having the ordinance read by title only? Let's go ahead and then have the City Attorney, uh, read Ordinance 5092 by title, uh, only.
Ordinance Number 5092, an ordinance adopting new requirements and regulations relating to campaign finance.
Okay, uh, all those, um.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion to pass 5092, uh, to Tuesday, Sep- uh, uh, April 28th for a second reading.
Um, yeah.
Okay, so we have, we have, we have a, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I motioned.
Kelly moved and I seconded.
Okay, we'll agree to that.
Okay, um, in that this is an ordinance, um, my, my, uh, do we do this by poll, Walt?
Yes, I would, uh, suggest a, uh, a poll vote.
Claudia, could you poll the, the council?
Counselor Drapkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Stassen?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor President Minkie?
Aye.
Uh, Ordinance Number 5092 passes unanimously with a, to the, the first reading, six to zero. Now Walt, can we move forward with a second reading tonight if that is what the council would like to do?
If the council wishes to, um, it can do so, uh, as long as there's no negative vote and it's allowed to be read by, uh, title only.
Okay, yeah, my, my, uh, I, I have some, uh, missteps, I think, on my, my, my sheet here. So again, um, do I have anyone that would, uh, uh, object to us having a second reading tonight, Ordinance 5092? By title only? Seeing none, Walt, could you do a second reading of Ordinance 5092, um, by title only?
Ordinance Number 5092, an ordinance adopting new requirements and regulations relating to campaign finance.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to, to pass Ordinance 5092?
I, I so move.
Second.
So Sal and Kelly, and, uh, Claudia, could we poll the council?
Um, I just wanted to clarify with Walt, is there any issue that we did not publish this as a second reading on the agenda?
Was it available seven days? No. Uh, was it available for public inspection seven days before the meeting?
It was.
Then I think you're okay under the charter.
Uh, Counselor Drapkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Stassen?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
And Counselor President Minkie?
Aye.
So, uh, Ordinance Number 5092, uh, passes unanimously six to zero. And that takes us to the end of our agenda tonight. I would really like to recognize, uh, Claudia and Scott for their efforts in, uh, getting us all set up. This is our second meeting. I think it's gone very well. So again, thanks so very much for the, the time and effort everyone's putting in. Uh, and I think, uh, it is 9:30. I think we've done pretty well.
Good job, Mayor. Thank you.
I would just like to remind everybody that your S E I filings due tomorrow if you haven't filed it yet.
Yes, and don't forget to look at your budgets. Good night.
Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.